It's been a difficult year. A lot of us are thankful to still be here through our issues we've had. Some of us, I think, have been sick throughout the year, but yet made it through this pandemic. And not, not all of those were quite that fortunate to get through this last 14 months. I'm sure some of y'all lost some good friends. I know I did. We lost, I remember an Oldham County preacher right here. He's preacher Fols Church, great guy. We could go on and on as to who was with us about 15 months ago that's not with us today. So anyway, we only have 26 items on the agenda tonight. So usually 26 takes us to about 11:30. So some of those may be just on the agenda and we can move through them fairly quickly. So I wouldn't worry too much about how many items are there at City Council and/or Department Directors who are with us tonight. So we'll try to get to them just as soon as we can. What I would like to do at this time, if we would, if you could stand, if you're able to, would we please stand and say the pledge allegiance to our flag? At this time, I'd like to call on our city clerk, Stephanie Cooper, to call the roll. And if we have a corner present, we will begin the meeting. So Stephanie, if you would, please call the roll.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Joe. Trey.
Elsie.
Here.
Debbie. All is present.
Okay, all being present, I'd like to go ahead and at this time call this City Council meeting tonight on June 7th, 2021. You have received your agenda last Thursday, I believe it was. You received your packet with everything in your packet. So you were sent a, an agenda for the nice meeting. So who would like to look at the agenda and even prove it as presented and/or add any additions or corrections to the agenda that you have in your packet?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda as presented in our packet.
Okay, the motion has been made by Leslie Wright. Would there be a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Andrea S. Price. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, also in your packet tonight, you have the minutes from our May 3rd, 2021 meeting. I will give you time to look over those minutes. And if you have any questions or corrections or concerns about any way the minutes were put together, please let us know and we will try to look into any correction you may have. So I'll give you a moment or two to read those minutes from our May 3rd, 2021 meeting.
I don't know if this matters or not, but on the LaGrange Utilities Report, it just said councilwoman made a motion to approve report. Is it, are we, do we need to put which councilwoman it was? Or does that, is that not very relevant?
I can go back and put the name in.
Okay.
A motion and a second. Does it have a second there, Leslie? Excuse me? Okay, does it have a second? Okay. We just need to add a motion person to that. Okay, any other additions or corrections that anyone wished to ask about or change?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A motion made by Joe Davenport. Would there be a second to that?
Second.
Second by Debbie Pollard. Any discussion on the motion before the council? All is in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, in your packet tonight, you also have many pages of payables for this particular month. So if you would, I know you had time to probably look over those if you've gotten to them over the weekend. I know I always like to say that because a lot of folks tend to think that this is the first time these council folks have seen these payables and they just approve them very rapidly. But hopefully they've had a chance to look at them and are ready tonight to either approve or disapprove any, any payable before them. So are there any questions or that we might be able to answer for you? Yes, Leslie?
On page two, it says the Miller Company Police Monthly Lease on Copying Machine for $150.57. Then right underneath it, it says the exact same thing for $166.64. Was this two months of the copy machine? Or was that a, a double check or payment or?
Heather Woodcox, would you come forward, please? Just so we make sure we get the right, correct answer on that particular payable that Leslie's asking about. That was easily determined. Any other questions before anyone while we have Heather up here? I know there are a lot of payables there. I think there was 400 and I forget, 400 or 224,000 or I can't remember what the figure was. Lot of payables.
On the compensation tax, Mayor and I were going over them today and he noticed, he noticed that on one of the compensation tax payments, this Louisville paving, the description says compensation tax refund, that is actually Eden Parkway. Does that actually, the second, third to the last page, sorry. It's actually supposed to be Eden Parkway Construction, not refund. That was an error.
Did everyone get that? What she's talking about?
Your compensation register?
Compensation tax check register. 1163.
64.
Basically headed down as to Louisville Paving Company. She had it down as a refund, but actually it was a payable to Louisville Paving for 140,000 or 1.33. And she had it listed as a compensation tax refund, which it was not. So that's where the 442,000 were paid out during the month, but we had a lot of payables for the work being done in Oldham Reserve in terms of paving and road construction Anyone else have any questions about any of the payables? I know you're still looking to them. Go ahead, let Andrea.
I just have a question about the pond lady. I know this was for the Wilborn Parks Pond Treatment. I wanted to know, how long is our contract there and how is it working? Is that treatment effective? And how many do we need to renew that contract?
They renewed it for the 7,500 this year. It's 70, so she can treat up to the amount of 7,500.
The beginning of another year, Andrea, to try to keep the moss and all the algae out of the lake, which I know we've had trouble with that the last couple of summers when it's, the humidity's been definitely high. So I think we would all agree that last year it did great. And the pond lady has been renewed to do it another year for us.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Real quick. I'll take as long as you all need to. Because I want to make sure all the council folks know what we're hanging out each month. Unless there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Debbie Pollard, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion before the council? No further discussion, all is in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Want to pause? Thank you, Heather. Okay, also in your packets tonight, we have our bank accounts, all of our ending balances for the month. So as you look at those, I think everyone would agree that the city's very strong in our financial accounts. But if anyone has any questions either about the bank accounts at this time, I'd be glad to try to, myself or Stephanie, would try to help you out in terms of any account balances in our banks. As you look at that, I'd also draw your attention to the Settle Grange 2020-21 revenues. This is based on our year-to-date expenses based on where our budget began at the beginning of the fiscal year, what has been spent, the amount of percentage left in each line item. So if anyone has any question also about any of the percentages left in any given line item, we'd be trying to answer those questions for you as well.
Actually, I have a question. On the third page, it says payment to county on insurance. We have the annual budget of 23,000 and so far we paid 37,069.86, which is 14, a little bit over 14,000 dollars over. How did that happen?
Basically, how that happened was probably based on history from the previous year, Leslie. What that mounts to is anything in the Oldham Reserve is split between the city and the county. And it's the health, it's the insurance premium tax that Rawlings pays on the facility. And what's generated there, we have to give the county the half of that. So Stephanie figures that up. In this particular year, it ran much higher than typically it would have for some reason, maybe just because he's paying more casually as far as his insurance is on, based on the building itself. Thus, it was like 14,000 dollars higher than what we anticipated it would be.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
It's all split evenly between the city and the county. Anyone have any questions on either of those documents? Either the bank accounts and/or the percentages left in each line item for the fiscal year that ends here in a few, about a half of, about two weeks?
The school still paying for the security officer?
Yes, LaGrange Elementary pays in full for the security officer at LaGrange Elementary. Sure do. The school took that on themselves and they do not charge us anything. Chief, what do we do if anything? I know they take care of the full salary. Do we have any out-of-pocket expense whatsoever? We provide the car there, we provide a vehicle. Of course, we give them a uniform, but much, anything other than that? If you need to answer that, please come forward. Because I'd like to all get it all on the record, so it will be recorded.
Pasta is basically out of the school board.
Speak into your microphone, so everybody can hear you in the back, chief.
The person?
I think he's on, he's just got to get up. Jay says.
Better.
And y'all hear him in the back. That's what we're trying to improve in our sound system. Okay, go ahead, chief.
As far as the personnel cost, especially in Officer Dawson's case, he is a contract officer, so retired status and returned to service. So the payroll is incurred back to us from the school board and we would just have related equipment costs. We keep him equipped and the school board even covers the training cost. They institute spare days in his work schedule to maintain his law enforcement officer certification. So there's training weeks built in for even that cost as well. But basically, we're in it for equipment that he carries on his person and the vehicle.
Okay. See, who had a question on that? Somebody? Does someone have a question on that? Oh, Joe did. So Joe, did I ask your question?
Yes, I just asked if the school was still paying for him. Yeah, that's all. Thank you, chief.
All right, anything further on either our bank accounts or our financials? I'll entertain a motion that these two last documents be approved by the council. So motion made by Elsie Carter. Would there be a second to that?
Second.
Can we just go back to the, sorry, I don't feel like these work very well. The microphone. Can you explain, just because we've had a little bit of a sidebar, the Officer Dawson's, his salary goes back from LaGrange Elementary, but does it go into the general fund? Is that how it's accounted for?
Now, the police operational budget, you know, anything that, whatever he expends and writes on his timesheet, the schools pick it up entirely. Okay? That's how that would be. Now, how it's handed internally, Stephanie's department, she could explain that, but I do know the schools take care of each resource officer.
Quarterly reimbursement, we submit his hours, which school resource officers, their hours are basically known annually. They're locked in for the amount of educational institutional hours and the built-in or the added training hours on that as well. So at the beginning of the, the school year, they know those hours and what the salary's going to be set at for that rate. Matter of fact, I think it's a flat rate across, for the city and the county police SROs on an hourly rate.
Okay. Get that, Trey? You okay with that?
I think our question or sidebar was that it looks a little funny on the statement because it looks like we didn't pay him anything and then it just looks like there's a deficit, but there's not. The school's paying for his salary, but I guess his salary goes, I don't know if it goes to your general, to the.
Show a deficit until they get that quarterly check in.
Yeah, we try to, once we expend it, we try to get as quick, quick from them as we can. They, they try to stay up with as best they can, but you know, they're, they get it done. Okay? All right, we did have a motion beginning to be made by Elsie Carter. And did anyone have a second to that? Would anybody second that? Debbie second it? Okay? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the financial report? If not, all is in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to pause? All right, thank you. Moving on to item seven, LaGrange Main Street Report. Sandy Fokes is here tonight, so I know she's got a great report to give.
I have a great report, but y'all know I could talk about Main Street and talk about LaGrange forever. But in light of seeing that agenda, I'm going to just cut to the chase, all right? Hope y'all don't mind. As you know, we are in the midst of recovering from the effects that COVID-19 pandemic has had on our citizens and our local businesses. We have seen so many great positive signs of recovery, but there's still a lot to be done on this topic. As community leaders, it is our duty to do all that we can to strengthen LaGrange and position our town for a future of growth in an age of a new normal, whatever that's going to look like. Under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and COVID recovery funding, we can do just that. So Mayor Black asked us recently, it's a group of representatives comprised of LaGrange Main Street Program, LaGrange Tourism Commission, the Historic Commission, the Oldham County Chamber in Economic Development, and business and property owners to think about how this rescue funding could be used, what we could, what we could really do to have an impact. So Mayor Black asked us to put this group together and start putting those ideas into motion and, and really come up with a solid, solid plan for this. The, the ideas that came forward were to address the negative economic impact of the pandemic and a speed recovery for tourism, travel, and hospitality in our, in our community. And he asked that we bring these ideas to the city council today. So we closely collaborated, as I said, with all of these fine people that I get to work with and call my friends, and really understand that Recovery Act, the usage, determine effective and appropriate solutions, and craft a recommendation for you all that we felt what was in, what do I want to say? See, I love. See what happens when I don't pay attention? I start making eye contact and I'll lose it. So, but really to craft that recommendation. So we've just finished putting that creation together. We've got a presentation for you and we would like to share that recommendation with you all today for a vote. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my friends and my coworkers, my peers here. Turn time over to Heather Hottenroth with the Main Street Organization Committee and the Historic Commission and Ms. Donna Sabo.
Great, hi, everyone. I'm Heather Hottenroth. Thank you. I was elected the one that gets to go through this fun part and I hope that I can be as clear as possible.
Before you, before you start, you know, we, we met, we did meet and briefly around the table at Ernesto's. And, you know, my hope was, you all, that possibly in the American Recovery Act, there would be opportunity for hopefully some infusion of some of the money for, for tourism purposes. I just want the council to know that I haven't promised anything to anyone. I, I did ask if perhaps this could be a possible, appropriate expenditure under the guidelines, that this would be a way that the city council could eventually decide how proportional amount of this money may be spent. To this date, city council, we haven't received $1 yet. You know, we, we hope to receive it and we, we, we have done everything we can from the city standpoint to submit all the paperwork that department, local government feels that we need to get ready to receive it. I will tell everyone that I don't decide by myself how any money's spent. And once this money does come to the city council, it will go to the same place it went previously when we released three or four hundred thousand dollars previously with the first round of the CARES Act money, which a lot of nonprofits received that. We were very generous to give a lot of that away. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands. I welcome your presentation. However, eventually the budget committee, once we get a allocation what we are to get, then the budget committee will try to, with even like general council's help, will try to cipher through these complicated ways to use this money and see perhaps if tourism will fit. Okay? I just want the council to know that. I, we haven't promised anybody anything because this council may not think tourism would fit, but once we get the money in hand, we will pull out all the paperwork and let the budget committee go to work on how across the city, where does the money actually can be spent? Okay?
Okay, so for what we're sharing today, I'll share with you what we did so far. This is just really being more proactive than anything because we know that's coming through and we didn't want to be behind the ball, you know, if it comes in next Tuesday, if it comes in from a month from now. So just really thinking through, given the light that John has been doing a really great job lately of trying to pull different departments together, really investigating for collaboration and not just one department doing something, but really collaborating. And so we really took a hold of that and said, how could we best collaborate so that we can really help with, if these COVID relief funds come through? How can we collaborate with the city council with these different entities? So if you look at this page one, we really went through, the first step was to try to understand deeply what is the Rescue Plan Act and what are the Phase One and Phase Two? And then try to understand the specific local COVID recovery funding and what's appropriate for use in that funding and what's not appropriate. And so went through lots of documents that are out there, you know, at the United States Treasury websites, at tourism websites, you know, at all these different blogs, trying to understand that, trying to get a hand on what we've gotten so far. And so we went through that and tried to understand in detail, you know, these five categories that you're seeing at the top of the page, what's allowable. Part of this was just interest on our part, but also how, how can we be prepared for this as our local LaGrange? And then we spent a little bit of time with the locals, trying to understand, you know, what was the effect on small business from a COVID perspective? And so we went and, and we just read through, reviewed a bunch of documents, collected documents, kind of cataloged those documents, highlighted them, tabbed them, and we have that at the ready. And so we, we, you know, did a little brainstorming session, just trying to understand, you know, what could be funded? And we found that there's this one particular category. It's, it's 2C here highlighted in yellow below, that the speedy recovery of tourism travel and hospitality sectors. That this seemed like a real good fit for some of the things that we could do to truly impact small business that was affected. So we spent time, for example, with Ernesto and tried to understand, you know, his like revenue and where he was impacted, tried to understand from, you know, people on Main Street and some others off of Main Street, you know, truly how they were affected so that we could try to look at how this matches with the actual act and the recovery funding for the local. So that was kind of step one. And then step two, what we, what we did was we took a step back and we said, you know, let's not just straight go-to solutions. Let's look at, you know, how we might gather and get the best broad perspective. And so we are suggesting that we create a task force for this COVID recovery money to work through just what we had worked through, but broaden that, to look at using, working collaboratively with city council, a couple of people from city council, a couple of people from Tourism Commission. We've already been working together with Donna and, and say John Lott. Small businesses and having that perspective. So we have Julia Kuntz and Ernesto, who've already been collaborating with us. Looking at Oldham County Chamber of Commerce with David Bazanas and Sandy Hamilton. Looking at the LaGrange Main Street Program with Beach and Sandy Fokes, as well as the LaGrange Historic Commission, working with Angie Campbell and myself. And so really trying to have a holistic view of a review committee is what we're suggesting. And the process we're suggesting might look like this, that we get this task force together. We ask the city council to, to have this cross-functional task force. We carefully together review the Rescue Act and, and appropriate usage as a team. We then have these committee members collaborate to determine the appropriate opportunities. We create a final list of a proposal for a city council meeting and have a special final list review, review of the programs as well as the detailed budget. We then take that budget to get city council approval and we align that budget with that, that Recovery Act funding. And then we're able to then carry forward. We're saying for each one of these projects that we see forward, we would really like to, to have that collaborative, collaborative spirit and say, let's create co-leads, right? So we have somebody from city council paired with say, somebody from the chamber or somebody from Historic Commission on another initiative, paired with somebody from Historical Commission. We think that that's how we're going to really start to collaborate truly and instead of just have meetings to collaborate, collaborate on programs and projects. And then from there, you know, have these co-leads be able to then report out. There is an audit function of this Recovery Act where you need to give actual reporting. So as the projects move forward, we're able to see how the money's been spent, any, any relief that's been made and we're able to create a good audit report of that to then report back monthly at the city council meeting. And so really, it's, it's pretty much what John's saying, you know, how can we pull together a committee to do just this? But we're just asking to extend that committee to be truly inclusive of the different committees that are already starting to, to collaborate together. I wanted to show an example. If you go to the next slide, we are not going to be pitching this today. This is the work that we did based on John just saying, hey, let's brainstorm what this money might be used for around tourism. And so we put together a really, we worked very intensely in a very short period of time, I would say, but then we, we did feel the need to say, you know, let's not give tactical solutions at this point. We really do want to come together in a collaborative spirit and try to understand that. And then we haven't even got the funding yet. But this is a look at how a proposal might go that you guys could look at. And so you'd see, you know, tourism, there's four main buckets of tourism. You'll see on slide four here, here, look at, look up at me for a second. You'll see this slide with the four boxes, right? So kind of four main categories, you know? And what we did was we really crunched the, the four, four core things together to be able to come up with this proposal. And that's what we're suggesting that anybody does on this task force. One was what are the appropriateness areas of, of the Relief, of the Relief Act? That's number one, you know, to really understand what's appropriate. Two is to understand fundamentally, what are we having trouble with, you know, in our local area? And then three, to understand what are core fundamental basics, nothing frilly that we need to do, that are too far off, but really tactical things that we could do that we could hit the ground running right away to, to improve. And then five, what are the things that we feel are doable, right? So maybe it's something that we should do, but we don't really have the know-how at, at our fingertips to be able to do this quickly. And so we crunched all of those elements to come up with this list of 16 things in four categories. So if you look at the next page, you'll see there's a showcase of, you know, four main categories with, with fundamentals, with clean up and beautify, showcase unique assets, refresh and add new experiences, and solid tourism planning. Each one of those have core tactical projects that can be done within an 18-month period. Some, some could take two, two months, others can take 18 months. And then with each one of those, we put together a business plan for each. And we tried to understand, if you look on the next slide as an example, you know, what's the description of this? What are the core components of it? What's the estimated completion date? Who would ma- Who would manage that or co-lead it together from the different committees? And then what would be the estimated cost total? And so this is something that we've already done a whole lot of work, so we're not starting from scratch. But this is the type of proposal that I would suggest that we go forward with as far as understanding what the Recovery Act funding could look like. And so I would just like to again state the ask. The ask is that we create a really good, strong, cross-functional committee where we can truly collaborate amongst the different commissions to decide how this funding could be best used to really help our local community. Okay, now I'm going to open it up to a few people that would like to speak for just a moment.
Good evening.
Hi. Your name?
My name is...
I know who you are.
I'm Julia Kuntz. I am on the Board of Directors for the Oldham Chamber of Commerce. I'm also on the Main Street Economic Development Committee. I'm also an investor and a business owner here in the Historic District. So I do have a vested interest in the prosperity of our community and anybody struggling. So I, I think any opportunity to have an expedient recovery is, is fantastic. My, we have hundreds of people that, that come into our business every single weekend, sometimes on Friday and Saturday and Sunday. I'm in the event industry. So I'm, I'm boots on the ground per se. I see firsthand what, I, I get the feedback from them. And it's not just the events, when, when they're coming in for the event, they've already made multiple trips with, you know, mom and grandma and sisters and, you know, to, to visit, to schedule tours and they want things to do. So the more people we get down here, that's great, but we want to keep them here. So that is what's going to help all of our businesses. So I, of course, feel like anything that we can do along the lines of tourism would benefit, it, it would have the greatest impact in the quickest amount of time for, for all of our restaurants, for all of our, you know, everybody's business, Q and A. We just, we all benefit, we all prosper and, and can get on track and make it even better than it was before. So my interest is absolutely to build, you know, not just restore, but, you know, get the most bang for your buck, you know, to, to really look at ways that we can, you know, help these businesses recover, but move forward and make it bigger and better.
You know, I know we're not in question and answer, but, you know, want to make sure if, if and fact the council ever approves any tourism dollars to, to, if we can do it, I'd like to help all the businesses in LaGrange, just not Main Street.
Right.
You know, we need to have something in the package that if you, if you're in a shopping center down on 53, it actually helps you out there as well, you know?
Absolutely.
As far as their economic input. And I just can't, I just, I just prefer it not to be Main Street and one street off Main Street.
Not at all.
That's what we're thinking about.
Anything, anything that helps, anybody that comes into town, they're, they're blocking off sections at Holiday Inn. They're going to, you know, hey, go down, take your family to the, the drive-in movie theater. There, I mean, it benefits our entire community. So any, anybody we can get in, it's just that a tourist attraction does just that. It's, we're bringing people in. So I'm not saying that's the only way, but I'm, again, the most bang for your buck, I'm all about it, to utilize any funding to get the biggest impact.
I want the, I want the, the boat to rise of the tide to clear across LaGrange. Okay, that's what I meant.
Yep, absolutely. Everybody wins.
And just to answer that quick question, you know, we looked at tourism for the whole city, not specifically for Main Street. So that was covered with what we did.
Sorry. In there, you know. Thank you, Julia. I don't think, I don't think, I've watched your place and you've been busy for the last year. You know what I'm saying? You've done great. So your place has really been successful because you've been able to handle some events that maybe someone else couldn't, you know?
Yes.
So I appreciate that. And for the council, if you don't know it, Julia's really moving her thing up, but she just had to sprinkle her building, sprinkle it.
Yeah.
And so anyway, that's what...
Huge cost.
Go ahead, thank you though.
A lot of benefit for sure.
Spent tons. Hi Donna.
Hi everyone, I'm Donna Sabo. I'm here representing LaGrange Tourism, a city resident, employee that works here in the city of LaGrange. And I'm excited and I just, from my perspective, I want everyone to know that I fully support this plan and I'm, I'm on board to help in any way I can. Any questions?
Do, what do you do here in town?
What do I do? I sling pizzas during the day.
Do here in town? We don't, we haven't seen you, have we?
I'm new.
Just kidding Donna.
You all so much.
With hometown pizza, we know that and many, and many other things.
Hello, I'm Angie Campbell Akers. I live here in LaGrange, I have the Campbell Studio, and I'm also the chairperson of the LaGrange Historic District's Commission. And I just want to say that I really support this idea, this plan, whether all the money goes to it or part of it. A couple of ideas that, that have been brought forward are investor grants for facades on the buildings and Main Street and the alley project, which I think will help the whole town. It gives us something to do. It, you know, it uses space that's not being used in a fun way that I think will benefit everybody in the city. And the grants for facades, you know, we're always asking people to fix their buildings up. It would be great to be able to say, let us help you. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. Another idea is signage that leads people to all the special things in this town. I think that helps not just tourists, but also the people that live in this town that have no idea what's here. You know, all the time I'm finding out something about an old building. It's like, I didn't know that happened. So anyway, I just want to say I do, do support this and hopefully when the time comes, you will consider it. So thank you very much.
And I want to bring your attention to page eight. There's a picture on page eight with this archway over this evidently street. And, you know, when I've thrown this tourism possibility out there, I've had people say, could we put one of those over the highway down by McDonald's or something? Because what's getting ready to happen there? And the bid has been approved, the bid might have been left. I know Mac Construction is going to start a major intersection improvement down there any day at McDonald's. And they were just asking me, what preparations could we possibly make at, at that particular intersection to do something as you see in page eight? But I said, how much would that be? They said half a million. So I said, okay. So.
Maybe that would be later down the road. But there are, there are things that are a little less than that that would also be helpful.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, thank you Angie.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Good evening, welcome. My name's David Bazanas. I'm the president of Oldham Chamber in Economic Development and I'm, I'm excited to be here tonight to speak in support of this plan. And one thing I think that we should acknowledge in, in that there's a lot of collaboration that happens in this community. It's refreshing that we're here together. We should probably be doing that more so that you can see the work that our agencies do together, the boards and the commissions and the volunteers that serve on all these boards and commissions. In fact, you know, my colleague Sandy Fokes is here, Director of Main Street Association, but the people who've put in a significant amount of time here are people who have not just invested their time in serving on these boards and commissions, purchasing properties and improving them, creating a business that attracts more people to our community, but also they put the time in to help us plan a bigger picture that we can take funds like these and offer a transparent way with accountability to show tangible changes and improvements to the tourism opportunities that the city of LaGrange has. Specifically, I would like to talk and support about this plan in terms of, I think, one of the most helpful slides that Heather had put together here. And by the way, thank you Heather for the time that you have donated to putting this together and Julie. This is a, this is a very, this is a, this represents a tremendous amount of time and work to do the research, to come to the conclusions that are these. And then as we have been working together and have been approached by Heather with, with her ideas, recognize how solid they are and how they line up with what other communities are doing around the country and having success with. That is a, something that should be encouraging and helpful, that should give us confidence in this plan. I believe as a director of the Chamber in Economic Development, that these initiatives that are on this, while we could debate and, and collaborate about changes that could be made to them, that overall these are achievable goals. The things that keep us from achieving a lot of things in any community is just the commitment of funding. And this is a, an opportunity for us to capitalize on a terrible situation that has provided resources that we can put back into the community that will see tangible benefits. In regards to this project and how it affects all businesses in the city, which I also want to thank Mayor Black for always heading up efforts to get us thinking, to push us to bring more ideas to the table. This example of this is, is another one of those opportunities we've gotten from the mayor to say, hey, if we're able to get this and if it's able to be geared towards tourism, what do you think we could do? What are the possibilities? He didn't say, this is what I want to do. He said, what do you think we should do? And so we're here with these ideas. I think they're great ideas and I think this is something that should take serious consideration. If we're able to make these earmark these funds for these types of things, it will be a really crucial part of it. And one final parting thing, because I know we've got a long meeting here tonight, I also want to say that in the work that Ms. Sabo has done, also a volunteer in multiple things, not just a business owner and supporter here in the community and a Main Street resident, but in addition to that, serving as the chairperson for the Tourism Committee, I'm sorry, for the Tourism Commission for the city, that they're in a process also of getting established and organizing, which includes bringing on another director. So what that means to me is more boots on the ground. You know, the more of us that there are in the trenches with our full-time jobs, being focused on this effort, I don't think it's realistic for us as a community to always rely on these volunteer boards to be delivering excellent work when people have all, all kinds of other commitments. It really requires strong leadership from the director position to be able to work in concert with these people. I think that Heather is a great example of someone who stepped up and said, I am willing to help somebody get these things across the finish line, we just have to find the right people. So hopefully the Chamber stands ready to support this and do whatever it takes to implement these types of changes and looks forward to continuing to work with this group and whatever point we're able to add a City Tourism Commission Director. They will be very welcome to join us and we're looking forward to having some more boots on the ground. That's all I have. Thank you.
David?
I promise we'll wrap this up, guys. So I just want to make sure everyone understands, on behalf of the Main Street Program, we absolutely support this. This recommendation is in direct alignment with the National Main Street Four Point Approach to Recovery. That includes design, economic development, organization of a sustainable downtown and promotion of our historic downtown. We're also very fortunate that we have our local leaders here who are proactive and forward-thinking in supporting a comprehensive plan to move LaGrange forward. So on behalf of Main Street, we stand firmly behind this plan. We think it is absolutely the best plan to move LaGrange forward.
Okay, before you take off on us, we've heard from all different boards and commissions, the chairpersons of many of those right here in the city, any council person wish to comment, anything at this time before Sandy departs?
Yes, John, I would. I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work that you've done. It's nice to have a plan finally, rather than everything being half-baked and half-thought out. As I looked at this, it's done well. I can't wait to get this in committee so we can discuss it realistically. We can discuss the money issues, the things that are necessary to implement this. And I think if we don't do something to implement a plan, it'll mess the boat because we're talking about a lot of money here, a lot of money. So I think we need to, to consider, especially this plan, because it does follow the four points of the Main Street Program. Thank you all so much for your efforts.
And thank you to the council for, for listening, for being so supportive. And again, John, for being forward-thinking and asking, what could we do? Let's be prepared and let's be ready when and if it does happen. And we appreciate you all for that and we appreciate the time tonight on a 26th item agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Sabo, have you, have you done all the speaking, you're going to speak on tourism tonight Donna, because if you have, I'm not going, I'm going to go ahead and let Scott give, Scott with LaGrange Utilities, but I didn't know if you wanted, you want to leave with these folks, if they're going to stay around with us? Okay, it's your report. Okay, thank you. That's what I was after. So anyone, anyone, you need to say one more thing?
This time, I think what we will be waiting on, as I said earlier, the, our, we've had to forward budgets to department local government. I believe Steffi has told me as of yesterday, that everything that they've been asking for us is all in. And I think maybe the next step will be the forwarding of the first approximate half of $2.3 million, half. This money needs to be spent by 2024 is the final, finalization when your plan should be, money should be spent by then, but they're not, they're giving you time to actually really think about how to spend it. It's not a rush thing. You know, another big item in this plan is infrastructure. Tourism is important, but infrastructure is important. Water and sewer is important. Drainage is important. So we, we have to really think about this city council as to, you know, there are some allowabilities within the, the plan and infrastructure is one of them. So, you know, we could spend $10 million in infrastructure tonight, real quick, if we chose to, but we just kind of have to really think about this, how, how the money can and will be spent. But once again, thank y'all for your... Okay? Mr. Cragmell, the legal counsel has a comment or a question?
Okay, well, I just, can you hear me now? Okay. I just wanted to add something I just kind of discovered just today, I was reading up on this, is the actual period of time, this is, this whole act, if we get the money is somewhat prospective in that it is contingent upon losses that are directly related to the pandemic that are incurred from March 3rd, 2021 to December 31st of 2024. So there are losses that are incurred as a consequence of the pandemic, okay? And they have to be spent by actually by December 31st of 2026. So the first chunk we got was primarily for immediate relief for those that were immediately affected that were not otherwise reimbursed by PPP money and other sorts. So you can't, you have to be careful about, you know, double recoveries here. And, and Heather, this, this report is awesome. I would suggest that at the bottom of page two, when you have the little flow chart, that you insert a circle somewhere in the middle, which suggests an application process by the, by the intended recipients. Because we can't just give this money to some entity and then let them walk away. We have to measure the results and send that to the federal government. And so there's a lot of serious reporting that has to be done. And so, there's a lot of serious reporting that has to be done. But thank you.
I would like to just respond real quick. I, I just want to clarify that the proposal that we made today is not for tourism. The proposal we made today was specifically for a cross-functional committee from all different committees to be able to look at the Recovery Act funding. And that tourism was what we were kind of charged with looking at originally, but that this committee would be all-inclusive of all possibilities. So then, we can change that process, that was an example, and absolutely account for what the needed process would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all again, and thank you, Mr. Craig Mow. So if there's no further comments about this particular subject, we'll move on. No one else? Okay, let's go ahead and go to Scott Treese with La Grange Utilities. Scott, come forward if you would please, and just tell us how well La Grange Utilities is doing today.
I'm good today. Tomorrow may change.
Now, okay, ladies, Scott just said he needed $1 million for a sewer line, so what do we do now?
1.4, to be more precise. So you all should have gotten my report through email. I will say, June the 1st of 2020 was my first day employed with La Grange Utilities, right in the midst of the pandemic. This is the first in-person meeting that I've actually got to see you all spread out and not on a iPad screen that's about this big. So it's, it's nice to actually get to see everybody spread out and be in person. But no, La Grange Utilities, we're doing pretty well right now, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have from the report I sent, the financial stuff. I'll go through a few updates on what we've got going on. So our South Pump Station down New Moody Lane, we are actually in service with that station now. We've still got some bugs we're working out, so the old station at this point is still working, in working order as well. Probably in the next two weeks, we'll be taking it out of service, the old station, and be on the new station completely. We've just got a few things to work out with that. Our Pear Orchard Pump Station, we've, we've signed contract to move forward. The contractor is still waiting on some materials. Due to the pandemic, it's kind of slowed things down. I think PVC is in shortage right now, so they're waiting on some material to get here. Once it gets here, they'll, they'll get moving, moving with that project. And then our North Forest Main and Gravity Sewer, the portion of that goes through the Splash Park, and so we're currently at the Division of Water, waiting on them to give us approval for that project. We should, should be hearing from that any day. They've had it for, for quite a while, and it was assigned to a person to review it. So we should be getting something back from them. As soon as we get that back, we'll be putting that out to bid, to do that portion, so that we can hopefully be ahead of you all as you come through with your project. CSX did require us to do some paperwork, but we got that done. We've already got their approval. And so, we're, sometimes that can really slow things down, but we're, we're on track with that. We've got to give them 30-day notice when we get ready to proceed with that portion, which will be plenty of notice since we've got to do our bid process anyway. As far as other, on, you know, things happening in, in the utility, we're just going day by day. We've got a lot of in-house stuff that we're doing to prepare for some of these projects. We've moved some water lines, we've had, we're having to divert some things temporarily to get to, so we can get out of the way of the contractor doing this work. But that's pretty much what's happening here. We did, we have our parking lot. We have done, set out for bids for the concrete portion of it. The rest of, the remainder of the parking lot, we're kind of doing in-house, just kind of subbing that out ourselves. So hopefully, you'll see some changes in, in the presentation when you drive past our, our building in the near future. Hopefully, we'll start on that in the next month or so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
I have a question. We were talking at the ordinance committee about a couple ordinances that we may amend, 5255 and 52.73. In that discussion, we were kind of trying to determine the rate increase that LUC was going to be asking for effective July 1st for inside and outside the city. Can you just clarify for us what, if any, increases you're looking at?
So, so at this point, we're, we've already done our first reading on our budget, and so at this point, they're, they're doing a 5% for water and a 5% for sewer, which is within what was determined by ordinance prior to this, that the commission was allowed, the board was allowed to go to without having to have any approval from city council.
Inside and outside the city each?
Yes.
Thank you.
Scott, after you get the update about this Splash Park build, what kind of timeframe are we talking about after permission is given, do you think? Use a crystal ball.
So, so we'll, we'll put it out for bid. We'll probably let that run for two weeks, and, and hopefully, we'll see how many people pick up design from our, they'll pick about Lynn Imaging and some places like that, some of our, our engineers. And, and then we'll, we'll have a bid opening on those. Soon as we have bid opening, it will depend on how close we are to our regular board meeting. If we need to have a special meeting, we will to go ahead and award, and we plan to, as soon as we award, hopefully, the contractor will be ready to start. We'll, we'll give a notice to proceed within 30 days. So hopefully, if we can get, we're still waiting on Division of Water, we've got to get that approval first. So that, like I said, that could be tomorrow, that could be two weeks from now, we really don't know, but we'll move along as quickly. Hopefully, we're, we're hoping that by July, that we're going to be in construction at some point in July. But there's factors in there that we can't control, so we're, that's, that's our hope.
The engineering been completed yet?
Thing is done, and that's what's all at Division of Water at this point, and just, we're just waiting on, on their approval of the plans.
Okay, any further questions for Scott at this time? If not, oh, I'd like to get the council to approve his report. So who would like to make the motion to do that?
Don't move.
Motion made by Elsie, second by Debbie Pollard. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Thank you, Scott, and appreciate you coming tonight, and thank you for what you're doing up there, okay? I know all the guys and ladies really think you're a great guy.
There are 8,000 people in the city of La Grange.
Tell me he's a good guy. Okay. All right, buddy. Okay, item 10, public comment. Who would like to come up tonight and speak in our public comment portion? Your opportunity, Tracy.
Tell us how you like, you like being back here.
Okay, all right.
Are you relatives back?
Yeah, okay, which neighborhood? Come up here. Okay, okay, La Grange Acres, all right. Speaking of La Grange Acres, I want everyone to know that I've talked to Cory, and I've had a new, number of different ones asking, requesting, and not demanding, but least asking that the speed humps go back in La Grange Acres. So, and, and honestly, Mr. Cory, the sooner the better. I don't know when you've got that on the schedule to get those put back in. All the streets in La Grange Acres have been repaved, as well as Wilfrid Park. It all looks beautiful. The park looks beautiful. The streets look pretty, but the folks are really looking for those speed. Are they called humps or bumps?
Humps.
Okay.
I think they are.
Okay, depends on how big they are. Okay, all right, well, they're speed humps, right? Okay. So when do you think they, well, you mean, you might speak at in your report? Okay, thank you. Okay, no one here for public comment? All right, let's keep moving. We're moving on now. Reapportments of the Ethics Board. Dr. Bill Eisner, he said, John, we meet once a year, but that's about it. And I said, do we need to meet anymore? I said, Bill, you won't meet anymore unless there's a complaint alleged against a city councilperson and/or employee, something about a sometime ethics issue. So if that's be the case, you, Tommy Gowen, and Lucy Ricketts will meet to listen to the eventual complaint, if there is, if there were one, okay? So I'd like to recommend Bill Eisner. He agreed to, to continue, and his term would, would be from 6/7/21 to 6/7/23. So who would make the motion to approve Bill Eisner to continue on?
I'll make a motion that we approve Bill Eisner to stay on the board for a two-year term.
Motion made by Debbie, second by Bill Lamline. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? And same goes for Tommy Gowen. Tommy lives down on Fifth Street. If you don't know where Tommy lives, so Tommy would like to continue to serve at any capacity that he can, so his term would go, this says from 6/7/21 to 6/7/22 for a one-year term. I think he agreed to serve one year more year, I believe, okay? And then he may want to exit out. So who would want to approve Tommy Gowen to continue to serve?
To approve, to reappoint Tommy Gowen.
Motion made by Bill Lamline, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on that motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 12, Brandon Smith to the Board of Adjustments. Brandon also serves on the planning zoning, and, and honestly, Brandon almost said, Mayor, I really don't have time to be on both, but he did agree to give it one more year. Brandon is an excellent board member, lives up on Maple Avenue in the First Court, and he's an excellent board member, really picked up on that position. So I'd like to reappoint Brandon Smith for a one more year from 6/7/21 to 6/7/22. Anyone make that motion? Okay, motion made by Leslie Wright.
Second.
Second by Elsie Carter. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, let's see. Item 13, second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2-21, ordinance adopting the City of La Grange, Kentucky annual budget fiscal year July 1 through 21, through July 21/21 through June 30 of 2022. Mr. Trey Kammer, I think you're the, were you doing that tonight as far as introduction? Came through the Budget Committee, can't recall who would introduce these particular ordinances, but we will have a public hearing on the subject ordinance. So first one I'd like to do is the actual city ordinance for the city budget. You can just talk about the headline or whatever you want to do, Trey, and then...
What you have to do, Trey, is read the first bold print.
Yeah, I'll just read the bold print. So this is second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2-21, an ordinance adopting City of La Grange, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Okay, you know, sometimes we, we will have a motion to, to adopt a second, then we will ask to go into a public hearing. So which, which of choices you prefer to go with, Trey? Do you like to make the motion to adopt this ordinance at this time with a second and then move to a public hearing?
Uh, yes, and then, yes.
Aye.
We'll have discussion afterwards.
So you, you're making a motion to adopt this budget?
I'll make the motion to adopt the budget.
Aye. Anyone willing to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Elsie Carter. Okay, that's all we'll do at this moment. We have a first and a second, so we'll place it on the table for the time being. And at this time, since it does need to be held in, under a public hearing to take public comment, I'd ask that we have a motion to go into public hearing. Motion made by Debbie Pollard, would there be a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew Essent Price. Any discussion on that motion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I'm going to just briefly go through this budget, everyone. So this, this budget has come through the Budget Committee made up of Bill Lamline, Elsie Carter, and Trey Kammer. I think we had a nice discussion on, on where this budget takes us into the next fiscal year. And as far as our general fund revenues on page one, total general fund, the only reason that this has bumped up to $9,173,272.53 this year is because it typically runs about $5,100,000 or so. This year, it's up $9 million, and the only reason it's bumped up additional $4 million is you see on your second and third line item at the bottom, 2.5 million for the Springs Park, that'd be a Springs Park bond and a 1.5 million from cash reserves, which has caused that to increase to 9.173. So that, that's a $4 million plus in that category, and basically, that's where that differential is. For our second page, administration just lays out the different areas of the general fund expenditures, administration, special appropriations, parks, police, public works. Next page, City of La Grange, 2021/22 fiscal year budget. Added a little color into it this year, that looks pretty, I guess. Hope you like the color. General fund expenses, once again, is $9,173 and a few, a few dollars. One of the fiscal year general fund run revenues, basically what you see, you see what, what was projected in a 2021 budget, and after Stephanie and Heather, myself, and whomever else at City, at City Hall, looked at our, where our data was from, from this year we're in, to where we think it'll be in 2122, that's how we became and derived the numbers that we did with those numbers extended outward for this fiscal year. So once again, you see the $9,173,272.53. The concrete for alleyways, basically, we, we went ahead and inserted that into this fiscal year budget to be spent, and primarily because Stephanie Cooper's been carrying this money on the books for many years, and especially one of your account balances, on your account balances that you see every week, and she just wanted to get that $13,732.53 cleaned out and closed that one account out that's been just lingering there for years. And it was given somehow on a foundation trust or something, it might have been the head foundation, and it was specified to be spent for concrete. So that's what you're seeing there. The 2122 administration department budget in the pink, I'll call it. We have basically the full-time salaries of what, who works, primary City Hall, with the exception of, I think, part of Stephanie Winter's budget is in here, but the other part is in the Police Department. And then, of course, Heather, Stephanie Cooper, back at Crowder, and then Katie's probably, Katie Becto's probably over in the bus, bus section. As far as our healthcare, everyone, I'd like for you to know that our healthcare, we work very hard, and we, if you recall, we were talking about maybe 20, 25, 30% increase in healthcare costs, but I told our healthcare we were broke, and he evidently believed me. So I think we're getting a 12% increase. So that's about as great as we could do, and then, you know, I think it's about 12, 12 or so percent increase for this next health year. And we, we did not have one, one slight dip in coverage for the employees. It's still basically what, what they had, and, and I think for the added increase, we did well. We do have a line item in there, everyone, ordinance codification. I have $5,000 in there, but if you, if you recall this last few days, Jason Taylor, who is heading up the ordinance committee, he sent out an email to some of you, I think, on, on trying to maybe move to obtain a grant or some, something, as this item's discussed, to get our ordinance codified, and that could possibly cost more, but I feel like we've got five in there, and this does come about, we can always amend that difference in, or else we get a grant to do it. So I'm not really concerned about that line item itself. Repair and maintenance of City Hall, down on this same page we're on, has $60,000. The first $10,000 is just, just ordinary wear and tear at City Hall, or to do things that the $10,000 we cover upfront, but if you all recall, we've talked about, there's a, there's a issue going on with the brick facings of the City Hall, and we have $50,000 in there to try to at least, to study that, continue to study it, as to what the Building Committee and us, the City Council, and through Cory's direction, we will decide how to put some kind of covering on that, on those brick facings to keep them from getting the moisture into them that they're doing, but they're continuing, the facial part of the brick is continuing to fall off. To keep them from getting the moisture into them that they're doing, but they're continuing, the facial part of the brick is continuing to fall off. And that's the reason we have a total of sixty thousand dollars in that category, just because of that one expense. Special appropriations, we were able to drop the city bus transportation out of the city coffers this particular time of sixty-two, five. Because Katie has asked, because of the COVID, the CARES Act money and all we've been able to receive from there. She just didn't need the sixty-seven thousand this year to actually fund it from the city. So she asked for a reduction there and I appreciate that. Of course, we have Remains, Freedom Festivals, Chamber of Commerce, we'll be giving eighty thousand total dollars to that actual office. Sixty thousand goes to actual ODA, that's our contribution, as if the county equals that. To try to promote economic development primarily in ODM Reserve and of course the City of La Grange. So sixty thousand of the eighties for ODA directly. The other twenty thousand is our contribution to the actual Chamber of Commerce itself. Reserve to transfer, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's basically what we feel like will be the difference between what we anticipate bringing in for the fiscal year versus what we will spend. So we have, we hope if everything would stay as on course, we'd have about a two hundred and eight thousand dollar surplus at the year's end. If everything stayed the same, of course, most of you all know it doesn't do that. But at least we do have hopefully maybe some kind of cushion there to possibly draw from if another line item might need it during the year. At the bottom of that particular page, I know some of you all, your downtown Economic Development Committee, met with the train folks at the Train Museum. I think you all appreciate what they're doing there, at least the committee who met there. So they're basically on a volunteer begging, any way they can get money to keep the doors open. They love to take part in the trains. I think the kids and the people who go there love the Train Museum. So I said I would like to give them five thousand dollars for their actual operations as a contribution to the Train Museum. Also a designated five thousand dollars for the outdoor plaza that Mr. Hamilton's wanting to create outside. As a learning educational type of exhibit to make people learn about what the trains meant to La Grange, Kentucky. As they rode through here for many years and he's wanted to do that. Parks Department, we kept our, basically our, what we want to spend on the parks, pretty much the same, thirty-five and twenty-seven. Of course, here you go, you've got the Green Springs Park at four million. And then our first year payment on to the bonds, if we went a full year, everyone, the number will be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. But since we won't, we'll get started here hopefully in about July with the actual project. So we'll only have probably about a half a year's interest in the actual Springs Park allocation. So that one fifty-five will probably not reach that number in this fiscal year. Because the Springs Park will just be coming out of the ground as we draw down on our two point five million dollars of bond money. So we'll be in good shape there. Of course, we've got the Community Center debt. Also went ahead and put a salary in here to continue Tim Curtis's great work he's doing in our Parks Department. I've got him in here for next year for appropriation of fourteen-four. His, I believe, Tim's actual contract that we agreed to put together for him initially, probably expires in July. I think July thirty-first or something, I think that's the expiration. So this council will have to make a determination whether to continue Tim's contract. And he's here tonight, so I don't know. We'll see how that goes, Tim. So we also have him some Parks Director Supplies of fifteen thousand, so he can do things out in the city with different supplies. And also, you know, our Community Center is starting to pick up. So we do have some money in there for some part-time help that people might need to be there for certain parties. For, we've got volleyball leagues, I think, starting there the first of July. I think there's already twelve or thirteen teams are already put together to sign up to go to play volleyball starting first of July. And lastly, skateboard park pad. Trey Kammer and his Parks report might speak to more of that a little later. Initially, I put thirty-five thousand in this budget to maybe go to Andy Mondo and pave a certain area to move this skateboard park to. However, since then, the Parks Committee, I think, met at the Springs Park area. And I would like for the Springs Park Committee, in conjunction with our Parks Committee, to try to create and continue and push forward to study. Where, maybe with some planning, Mr. Lambline, you know, since you're the architect on the board here. At least give, we could use that money, possibly the least, maybe pay our architects some planning to see perhaps how could we fit a skateboard park in earlier than we most would think it could happen. In the phase two of our Springs Park area. So you'll hear more from that from Trey Kammer, I believe, a little later, or Joe Davenport, I'm not sure who's going to speak on that. Police Department, we have all our full-time salaries. Of course, this is just the Police Department by itself, this is not including the alcohol side. All these, all these employees, everyone, are, this budget is built with three percent increase across the board to all the employees. And so anyway, that's what, that's what they, you know, we've been coming through some years, but we always give them two percent. But each employee at renewal, July first, we'd get a three percent increase in their salary or their hourly rate. It's basically Chief Collette submitted here, so basically that's what Chief has asked for to run his department. This budget also has, I want to say it's got three additional officers in this budget that we don't have on the street right now. It's got three in here and the problem with it is Chief and Bruce Goodflesh, they're trying every day, but they're just trying to hire somebody. It's tough to hire and get them in here that they feel like would be good for our city. So this budget has three additional people built into it that are not on our street right now. So hopefully they'll have some luck in finding some guys to go there. As you see in that particular Police Department budget, you see the code enforcement officer, a portion of her salary at thirty-three, eight seventeen point seventy-eight. And then if y'all recall during the first CARES Act money, we afforded Chief Collette to get another part-time person over there at the Police Department, do some clerical work, things like that. So that's that last number of sixteen thousand. Public Works, I told Corey, he doesn't get any more money, he's finished, you know. But no, Corey, Corey running his department, he's gotten whatever he asked for, it's in here. You know, he's doing a lot of paving, he's doing a lot of concrete, he's doing a lot of work. And this budget takes into account a lot of that. I'm going to tell the council tonight that Corey is getting more than three percent. I'm raising his salary, I think, to seventy-two, five. Seventy-two, five? What he does and what he pushes and what he does in-house versus subbing it out, it just saves us tremendous amount of money. And if he were to sub it out, no telling, but he can oversee it, figure out how to do it himself. And I just wish he had more time and more people, really. But we talked about that today. Just the project up in front of the courts that he did in-house, the fencing and the beautification and the trees. I think we had estimate if someone else had done that, it'd been twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And Corey, I think, did it for seventy-four hundred. So, you know, that's just how valuable I think he is to our street department. Count title, Works Department expense, very last page on this particular thing here, folks. So Works Department to get a million, two twenty-two, one eighty-five, ninety-nine. So basically, that's primarily it. I think we're the biggest bulk of the money this year. Of course, we'll have money for sidewalks or paving and everything, but the biggest bulk of the whole year's end money will be at Springs Park at four million. Our city, our city's in great financial shape, I feel. We've got very good reserves and I always, I always say what I say, but talking about this comp tax, we've got a comp tax sheet here tonight. And I just would like to reiterate, the reason I feel this city is in the shape it's in is because of the fact that we have the comp tax in place. You know, we don't like to put taxes on anyone, but most cities that are doing anything to stay in time and economic development, building a better city for the future. They typically will have some form of that tax to try to provide for revenue, to do economic development, to create new jobs for its own citizens and bring things here. So that's basically it. We're in a public hearing, so is there anyone like to come forward and speak on behalf of the budget that I presented tonight? Or say anything about it or question it or be a supporter to start with? I support this budget? Okay, if no one's want to come forward to support it, is anyone against it? Are you against it Tracy? Okay. All right. So, all right. So anyway, anyone's against it? So we always have like a closing statement, and anybody want to make a closing statement for it? Well, there's no one here to make that either. But if there's no further comments about the budget, I'll go ahead and pass the motion to go ahead and close the public hearing and go back into regular session.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Hey, but Joe, second by Debbie Pollard, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to pass the budget as presented. Is there any discussion on the budget and anybody would like to make any additions or corrections?
I've got a question. As I was going through and looking at our, before when we were doing the statement of expend ensures and whatnot. And then I compared it to the budget that we have now. I'm just wondering, holiday pay, we spend between about forty-five thousand-ish plus or minus on holiday pay. But there's never anything budgeted for holiday pay. Is there a reason for that? Cause I've gone back and all, every single one of them say zero dollars budgeted, but then I just did a quick total, it's over forty-five thousand dollars that we spent.
If you wouldn't, try to tell them how holiday pay and what, how does holiday pay be incurred? What Leslie's question is.
Well, every beginning of the year, everyone gets a holiday pay, meaning there's twelve holidays that is, that gets paid to employees. As far as the Police Department, you know, not all police officers can take off one holiday. So, you know, they can take off whenever. But as far as holiday pay, it's part of the full-time salaries. The auditor just likes to see it split, you know, how many holidays.
That to me, it was just very confusing, cause when you're looking at all the numbers.
Right.
Now that we've got it in red, it really, really stands out and I guess it would. Yeah, I mean, I guess if he wants to see.
It is confusing.
You know, that unencumbered balance.
Say, say, I'll just try to, for clarification, say, say the day, Christmas, Christmas falls on a Wednesday, Stephanie, and you're a employee. You get paid for that holiday, correct? You get paid for that, if it's in the week, correct? Does that show up in what Leslie's asking or is it just?
It'll show under the holiday pay.
Okay.
Not, it's just part of the full-time salary, it's just that part of our audit. The auditor would like to see how much pay all the holidays are.
More of an auditor thing.
Yes.
Aye?
Okay.
Any other discussion on the budget? Anyone wish to put more money into the budget? May wish to take money out of the budget? It's your city budget, you know, it's not mine, it's yours. And if you think something needs to have a bump or something needs to have a deletion, please speak it up, you know, cause that's what y'all here to do.
We have a question. I understand there's been a lot of interest in the park and I certainly understand the efforts and I know there's a lot of support.
A little bit, Trey, I mean, Jason, thank you, sir, please.
These microphones are a little tricky.
They hear you down here, buddy.
As I said, I understand the interest in the park, I understand the efforts that have been made and certainly understand there's a lot of support for that. I just, it's hard for me to, you know, visualize an eighty-two percent increase in our budget, you know, for that project. And I just wanted to note that, but that's all I had.
Well, all I can say about that is would be, I've been around in this business and I hate to put money in the studies and the consultants. I like to put things on the ground, Jason, and I hear what you're saying. However, if we're putting things on the ground in form over time, where the people who decide to either live in our city and be a part of our city. We can provide them some give back for their tax dollars, the purposes that makes a community. Then, I mean, I've just seen too many good, wonderful things come out of infrastructure put on the ground like that. And I, one being the John Black Community Center, seventy-five thousand kids go through those turnstiles. Used to go through those turnstiles every summer to swim and have fun. And I just think we're in this business to provide what makes a all-around good community. And but I understand too that it's not cheap to do it, it's expensive. But the good news is, it's carried over a number of years where everybody's paying a little bit as we go to make it happen. It's not all one-time deal, it's being paid over as kids come and go, grow up here. And they would literally have a blast, I believe, at this downtown park that we'd be proud of. Okay, any other, thank you, Jason, for your comments, any other ones at this time? We have a motion and a second to approve the budget, if there's no further discussion on it. Leslie, anything?
I had writing everywhere, I'm just making sure that I had everything answered, that's all.
Okay.
One more question. So the Eagle Creek Back Nine went from one thirty-eight up to one fifty-one. Just wondering.
Great question. Basically, when that bond was set up, they front-ended it, front-loaded it at a lower amortization schedule. And I've asked that same question myself, but if you look at the amortization of that, there's about nine hundred thousand to a million still left paid or in debt on the back nine. And these bond originations and amortization of them, they fluctuate. But in talking to Dwight Salisbury, I knew that was going to be the case. That that particular rate would go up for this fiscal year. It can go up for a few years, Leslie, and it may come back down, just depends on how the people off the bonds need to be paid, how it was structured, okay? But it's a good question. Okay, motion and a second, no further discussion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Yes, Mayor, I thought we were going through roll call votes on second readings. We're supposed to go through roll call votes for all second readings, aren't we? For previous ordinance?
I don't know. If we are, we can. Go ahead and call the roll, Stephanie Cooper, please, on the roll call vote for the ordinance.
Jason?
He's hitting no.
No.
Leslie? Joe? Trey? Elsie? Bill? Andrea?
Yes.
Debbie? Seven to one.
Motion passes seven to one. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Trey Kammer, which one you have next, sir? You have another one, another ordinance budget?
Sorry, I still don't feel like my mic's on very well. Um, it's number fourteen, uh, second reading in public hearing of ordinance three dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance adopting City of La Grange, Kentucky, annual municipal road aid budget for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I guess I'm, I'll make the, uh, motion to approve the, uh, the ordinance, uh, three dash twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, motion to approve, second.
Second.
Second by Debbie. We have a motion and a second now. I'd like to enter, uh, have a motion to go into a public hearing to offer this budget to the public. Motion made by, who's that, Joe or Trey? Trey? Motion made by Trey Kammer, second by Leslie, always in favor, favor, let me know I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Um, Cory, why don't you come forward, sir? I think, uh, I'd like you to, uh, sort of give the, uh, council a briefing on your municipal road aid, how, how you spend it, what's carried over and so they understand it fully. Do you have one in front of you? Do you have a budget? Okay?
If I can dig it out.
Yes, sir.
There it is. Alright, I know we do have another truck. We actually have one on order that's supposed to be coming out of this budget currently, so it's actually tallied into this total. Um, of course, street paving's always top priority, uh, for me.
Get into the microphone, sir, so they can hear you in the back, buddy. Thank you, sir.
Microphone system. Um, so we have a hundred forty-five thousand in street paving. Um, I believe we have allocated in the regular, uh, general fund budget, a hundred eighty thousand, so I think typically we figured the average lifespan for a road is thirteen years, so we should be paving three miles a year, which we've been doing two, two and a half usually, but, um, so we're on target, we're doing pretty well. We know, we know we're doing a little better at paving since we don't, we haven't been buying cold patch, so, which is good. Um, of course, snow removal, forty thousand, um, it's probably gonna end up being, we'll probably spend every penny of that for salt. Our, of course, that's gonna be reported later, but our price of salt went up eighteen dollars a ton, um, just two truck coming out at seventy-five thousand and that's pretty much all but in a nutshell.
You have, uh, two hundred and sixty revenues and you, and plan on spending, spend two sixty, correct? Correct? That's what I see.
Well, we have a hundred twenty-eight surplus, we bring in a hundred thirty-two.
Right, but, so it adds two sixty.
Right.
Map snow forty, asphalt a hundred and forty-five, new equipment seventy-five for expenditure of two sixty, correct? Okay.
We'll have a small paving gig this summer, uh, top a few little loose ends, but then we'll take off again this fall. We'll be in Russell Courts, that'll be the next, next stop.
Okay, alright, thank you Cory. Um, this time I would ask that, uh, is anyone here in the audience would like to support this, um, you know, split budget for twenty-one, twenty-two? No one here to support it? Anyone here opposed to it? No one here opposed? Yeah, or go ahead and entertain a motion that we close a public hearing? Motion made by Leslie, second by Trey Kammer to go back to close the public hearing. Motion made and second, always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion and the second for the council? Well, the roll call vote, all those in favor, Leslie? I mean, Stephanie, call the roll, please.
Uh, yes, and just Mayor, just for the record, that, that ordinance was passed April third, two thousand and six, you can go back and check if you need to.
I'm good, I'm okay with it, Jason.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm okay with that, okay?
Bill. Andrea. Elsie. Eight to zero.
Okay, motion passes eight to nothing. Next one, Trey, looks like a city bus.
Uh, this is the second reading of public hearing of ordinance four dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance adopting City of La Grange, Kentucky, annual city bus budget for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I'll make the motion to accept, um, ordinance four dash twenty-twenty-one.
Motion made by Trey Kammer, second by Leslie. Now, we have the motion and a second, now I need a motion to go into a public hearing. Motion made by Elsie, second by Andrea. Always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, alright, uh, Katie, could you maybe look at your budget here and offer it to the council, please? Tell them what you're spending your money for.
Hello? Okay, sorry. Uh, my budget really didn't change much from last fiscal year. Uh, we do have some CARES Act money, uh, transferring over, um, one of the reasons why I requested less money from the city this year. Um, we are in the process of purchasing a new bus, it should be here in about three months. Um, we are also installing cameras on our, all three of our buses at this time, uh, probably should be in by the end of this month. Um, why, we have the wireless service camera fee at the bottom of the budget, we've added that in this year, uh, for the fees for that, uh, but pretty much everything else, uh, has stayed kind of the same, there's not been a lot of change, um, except, like I said, the purchase of the new bus as well as, uh, the camera system we're putting on. Thank you.
Okay, or somewhere, are they just, you just, or what?
The cameras? They're gonna, we're gonna have wifi on the buses, so we're gonna be able to see, uh, they're gonna be live feed, so we'll be able to see them. Yes, yes, sir. You got it.
You have, um, heard her city bus presentation? Um, at this time, I'll go ahead and ask, there's anybody here tonight in attendance to support your budget, other than yourself? Is anyone here would like to provide, uh, presentation of support of the city bus, bus budget? No one being seen? Is there anyone here tonight opposed to it? No one being seen? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion that we close the public hearing and go back into regular session. Who will make that motion? Okay, motion made by Debbie Pollard, second by Leslie Wright, always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, um, is any council person, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion about the city bus, budget at this time? We have a motion and a second. We'll move to a roll call vote. For no further discussion, Stephanie, please call the roll.
Jason.
Yes.
Leslie. Joe. Andrea.
Yes.
Elsie.
Zero. Okay, uh, Mr. Kammer, you're up, sir.
Sir, uh, this is the second reading of public hearing of ordinance five dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance adopting City of La Grange, Kentucky, annual alcohol regulatory fees budget for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. I'll make the motion to accept ordinance five dash twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, um, you make a motion, we had a motion by, uh, Trey, second by, who was it, Debbie down there? To, to approve the regulatory alcohol fee? So we have a motion and a second now, we, I'll entertain a motion that we go into public hearing for this particular matter.
So moved.
Motion made by Andrea Sumprey, second by Leslie Wright, always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, um, what we've, um, done here is, um, tried to take our alcohol fees and, uh, our full-time salaries and help supplement the police department, so Chief Collette, if you want to come up and maybe give the council a briefing on how this will help, uh, your actual police department general fund budget? Um, do you have one of these budgets before you? So you can sort of go through here and see, um, what percentages we're gonna allow to be coming from the alcohol side to help offset the full department expenses for the whole department.
Most of your alcohol fees to regulate to the state have to be used for administrative, educational or enforcement purposes, so of course that falls in line with police services. Uh, I think we're running around the, historically around twenty-four, twenty-five percent supported out of the alcohol budget. We're going up to probably closer to twenty-six percent of our overall police operations and equipment need budget areas. Um, as you can see, the full-time salaries, oh, moved down to the full-time salary of Tara Kelton, which you see the seventy-five percent there is because of the bulk of her daily work involves the ABC inquiries, submissions to the state, we're now dealing with, it's not more, more paperwork oriented anymore, it's a lot of online databases and getting the vendors and the businesses and the licensees onboard to do that online, some, some are still used to the, the old paper way, so she has to do a lot of tutoring and follow-up with them, uh, and she takes numerous phone call inquiries for that, so a lot of her admin duties do entail the ABC portion of our, our operation and of course, the twenty-five percent of code enforcement officer Winter, uh, we treat her as our eyes and ears, she's out and about just as the police officers are, she can see the violations when it comes to signage or any of the property delineations over alcohol service, uh, she keeps us informed as that as well and I believe the others are pretty much explanatory up into the, uh, when you get into the equipment area, our, our enforcement work involves equipment, so, and it's where do you put the, the emphasis, uh, a lot of police work is alcohol involved, so percentages are gonna be derived out of the alcohol revenue to support our equipment needs such as new vehicles and uniforms and equipment for those vehicles.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Um, do you all like have cameras or, and there's a lot of talk in the media about this work and body cams and, and for the vehicles and everything, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious what equipment.
We operate with the BWCs or the body worn cameras, uh, basically the vehicle cameras for our department have been phased out since we have one on our person at all times and matter of fact, Major Goodflesh had to devote quite a bit of time this year with, uh, a lot of the controversies and emphasis on police use of force, uh, under the Department of Criminal Justice Training and state law, we had to make sure our current policy was updated to meet those stat, uh, updated statutes and regulations from the Department of Criminal Justice, which our policy was essentially ninety-eight percent there, but that's, that most definitely alcohol supports that. We, a lot of agencies are using cloud services to maintain that, we sort of go a different direction and keep ours on our own drive because the cloud services are just exponentially expensive to have, even though we're running between fourteen to seventeen officers, you can imagine the daily activity and trying to store that much video data and audio data would just, it, it would be very cost prohibitive. That's probably the only difference we're operating under compared to the larger departments is we may not be using the cloud service, but we are keeping the data as we should.
Okay, Chief, thank you so much. Um, as far as the alcohol revenue, I want you all to key in on that last sheet there. We, we, uh, anticipated revenue this past fiscal year of three forty-four, but looking at our numbers, um, we think evidently during the COVID season, uh, people evidently started drinking and they drank and they drank and they drank, so, so, and in terms of the drinking side of it, we, we upped that number to three seventy-five, okay? Um, we have been carrying over the last few years, a little bit of excess, uh, uh, in that account, it, it actually had come about prior to me coming here, but each year, what we're, what we've done is tried to spend that to try to help supplement this police department budget and even at, at this year here, we're still around that twenty-three percent, uh, range of, of how this is part of the full, full police department budget, we're using only twenty-three percent, so our basically total amount would be five oh four, but three seventy-five comes from the general revenues of alcohol tax and everything's collected there and then a hundred and twenty-nine would be trying to get that reserve totally gone. The good news is, is we've got two new patrol vehicles in this budget, uh, the council was kind enough to recently in that last round of CARES Act by the police department, another, a new Durango, I think they received here in the last month or so, so we have that one, plus we have two, also two new units in this, in this budget as well to help, uh, uh, increase our fleet to newer, newer vehicles and we're, we're getting there slowly, but we're actually to get there, so, um, is anyone here tonight, uh, like to speak in support of this, uh, alcohol fund budget that the city's presenting tonight? If you're here, please welcome to come forward. Anyone here tonight opposed to what this proposes? No one's, uh, opposed to it, so that being said, I entertain a motion that we come out of public hearing and come back into regular. Okay, the motion made by Debbie Pollard.
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on that? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, everyone. Okay, now, we have a motion and a second on the table, this budget is open for discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Stephanie, please call the roll.
Leslie. Joe. Bill. Debbie.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Elsie.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Hey, thank you all. Okay, Trey?
This is the second reading in public hearing of ordinance six dash twenty-twenty-one and ordinance adopting City of La Grange, Kentucky, annual stormwater MS four budget for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, I'll make the motion to accept ordinance six dash twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you all, now we need a motion and a second to go into a public hea-
Second.
Made by Trey, seconded by Leslie, always in favor of the motion, let me know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, uh, Cory? What do you have? We want to speak to your annual stormwater MS four budget?
Okay, we have got quite a bit of surplus, uh, going now, but we will have some bigger projects, corpse will eat up some of that. Um, some of the other big projects coming up, we've got Cedar, pretty much from Jefferson Street to Adams and then Adam Street from Cedar to Earth Street. Um, we'll be looking for some engineering on the Adam Street side. Um, we have, uh, seventy-five thousand for a skid loader purchase, which is general, uh, drainage maintenance of drainage failures, keep forgetting to talk into this thing, I'm using the old mic. Education and training, we send Scott Self, he does a lot of our inspections along with Stephanie Winter, we, I like to, uh, definitely appreciate Stephanie's help, she just helps with some of the enforcement issues and of course, abatement, which we really haven't had many people that would be in a situation where a homeowner has a flooding issue on their private property, uh, they can apply to pay for up to half, uh, up to eight thousand dollars, um, to correct any kind of drainage issues, they would contract it out and then we reimburse them. We've had a couple of inquiries, but nobody's actually ever really fully applied for it. Money's there, encourage people to apply. So, um, outside of that, tons and tons of drainage stuff, probably one of our biggest complaints. Now, any questions?
Thank you Cory. Got three fifty-two you all spend, uh, this, this particular allocation of money, this is so fortunate that we were able to, uh, I recall when Veolia ran the actual stormwater MS four program. MS4 program for Oldham County, they basically had the money, but we were able to get that brought into the, back to the county fiscal court. And in doing that, we were able to get a control of some of the money that we're paying here. So now we, we receive $100,000 a year, which helps Cory to keep on resupplying this category to do all these drainage projects around our city. So it's really great that we have that money coming every year through the stormwater MS4 program. So is there anyone here tonight that supports this budget during the public hearing process? Cory supports it? Is anyone here opposed to it? Okay, no one supports or no one opposes? So that being said, I'll ask that we go out of our public hearing back into our regular session. So who makes that motion?
No moves.
Leslie Wright?
Seconded.
Makes a motion. Trey seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion. Let me know. I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion before the council? Yes, sir. Okay, that's a good question. So we have a motion, a second. Any further questions? Okay, roll call votes.
Then? Leslie. Joe.
Yes.
Elsie.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Bill. Debbie.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Okay, pass it. Okay, I think this is the final one. I know this is really boring to a lot of folks going through all these, but we have to do it. So Trey, go ahead and introduce the compensation tax.
This is the reading, second reading and public hearing of ordinance 7-2021 and ordinance adopting City of LaGrange, Kentucky compensation tax fund budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. I'll make the motion to accept ordinance 7-2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Elsie, Elsie seconded. Sorry, Leslie. So we have a motion, a second. Now we need a motion and a second to go into public hearing. Motion made by Leslie, Debbie Pollard seconds that. So I was in favor of the motion. Let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing now. So Stephanie Winter, would you like to come up and speak on behalf of your compensation tax area, please? If you know, you might be familiar with some of these things. You may not be familiar with some of them.
Stuck with the regular budget pretty close to what we did last year for the compensation tax because with COVID, we didn't know how the market was going to filter out. We do have several big jobs that are going to be starting this year. Number one, we have Speedway that's going on. They're getting renovated. We have Peak Road and we have the Trilogy that's getting ready to get started, breaking ground. And then we have the courthouse project that's going to be starting. So our comp numbers will probably, I would like to anticipate that they will be a little higher, but we wanted to stick with kind of a conservative number. And then the expenses that are listed, I mean, are expenses that have been talked about all along.
Actually, the payment to the county, everyone be one half of the Oldham Reserve debt. That will be our annual debt payment for the next fiscal year for 12 months. Compensation, compensation expenses.
The payment to the county for compensation tax is actually half of what happens out at Oldham Reserve. So from here on out, it's not going to be just Rawlings. We have other work that's being completed out there. So that also filters, factors into this.
Eden Park, Eden South, 174. Eden Parkway, everyone, should be primarily finished within this fiscal year. They've paved it, probably going to put their surface on the next week or so. If you haven't been out there, you ought to drive out there and look at the roundabout and what's going on out there if you want to go look at something. So Peak West Design, that could maybe happen this next fiscal year, 23,000. So for a total allocation of 2.7 million. So we're going to take 2.7 million in from comp tax, probably going to spend, spend every bit of it on building roads and splitting the half of it to county. Okay?
And I gave everybody a copy of the camp comp tax report. We closed it out for the month of May for the first quarter. So that has at the very bottom, it has the first quarter numbers for what we brought in for the compensation tax.
At the 554, please point in the direction you're talking about.
Brought in 694, 756. Then we gave the county 139, 934. So LaGrange's portion of that was in the 554, 822.
Okay, okay.
For first quarter.
Let's see. All right. Thank you so much, Stephanie. Anyone here tonight to support the compensation tax budget? Anyone here opposed to it? Neither being supportive or opposed, I'll entertain a motion that we go out of public hearing back in the regular session.
No moves.
Second.
Motion made by Leslie, seconded by Andrea. Any discussion on that? If not, I was in favor of the motion. Let me know. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a motion, a second. It's open for discussion. Anyone have any questions about the comp tax budget? If not?
Just I'll, I'll go ahead and ask it because I know it's going to be asked by other people. Because I'm, I'm making a presumption that this will pass because there of course are discussions that go on in committee meetings and budget meetings that not everybody may attend. So people are asking, why aren't we paying off this? Oh, tell me what's the word that I'm looking for.
Yes.
Yeah, why are we not paying it off with the compensation tax now? Why do we keep, keep it going? Why are we passing it again? And what, what's going on? And why would we need, why is it important that we would keep some construction?
Well, the answer, as far as I can tell you, that is the, the bond, the sunset of the bond, when it was originated, supposed to sunset in first, first month or two of 20, 2023. And the only way that I see to build infrastructure in Oldham Reserve, period, is to have a revenue source to do it. And if you were to pay it off today, and the council chose not to continue the comp tax, then we would be at a point, we'd have no money to do anything to improve the much-needed infrastructure portion of Oldham Reserve. Yes, the debt would be paid off, but we would have, now have no operating money at all. So when you look at the general fund and our, and our good standing financially, how we have to build that, you can tell the folks, we would probably have to start beginning depleting our, our general fund revenue that we have as a city. Now, if we would choose to do that, then, then we would choose to do that. But that day has not come yet. But the only operating money we have, Leslie, is to continue to pay our debt, receive the money, and do infrastructure improvements.
Yes, yes, I absolutely agree. I just wanted to make sure that that was very clearly stated because there's always questions around budget time. You have the money, why don't you pay it off? And I just wanted to make sure that that was stated and explained very clearly. Because I at first thought the same thing. And then after you explained it to me a couple of years ago, I went, oh my gosh, that makes a lot of sense. Because right now, there is no infrastructure out there. And we would have to really dip into a lot of the funds in the city. So I, I absolutely agree. I just wanted that very clear.
Us, for whatever reason, by us having to build the infrastructure between the city and the county, the only way we can attract companies such as Trilogy is build the infrastructure to allow them to be here. And the good news is they'll put 121 jobs on the ground. And then hopefully, those jobs will create revenue for the city for the long term, as many other companies we hold. So is that it?
Very clear and concise. I tend to be very wordy. Thank you, John.
Can I ask you a follow-up question on that? Just real quick. You said the tax was set to sunset in beginning parts of 2023. So am I hearing you say in your response to Leslie just now that we're keeping bond payments lower so as not to let the sunset occur? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
That, that, this payment method was based on amortization schedule. When it was created, the $10 million initial debt and the, the payment per year has been about a million one on average, Jason. And we're not doing anything to delay the payment of it. We could pay it off today. But if we pay it off today, the council will go ahead and make a decision for the future. Do, do we as a council continue to have the 1% tax with no strings attached? Or do you attach strings to it for the future? But no, we're not doing that deliberately. That's just what the amortization of the debt calls for 2023.
Amortization would show that if we continue this exact same path next year in the, in the early 2023, that it would sunset at that point, based on the numbers. Is that correct?
Based on the ordinance or what was approved by the city council at the time.
Okay.
And that was evidently figured as through an amortization chart when that thing would actually be paid in full. So that's where they set it at was 2023.
And that's our target date to still pay it in full though, right? That's still our target date to pay it in full, correct? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Have we voted on everything? Are we, we need to vote on the compensation tax side, right? Roll call vote. Okay?
Jason?
Yes.
Leslie? Joe?
Yes.
Bill? Debbie?
Andrea?
Yes.
Elsie?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Okay, motion passes. Thank each of you all for that period that we had to do that. I'm sorry we have to do it that way, but that's what the law says and that's what we did. So item 19, director's report, Cory, what would you like to give to the council tonight?
A few quick little updates. Still moving forward on our Fifth Avenue project. We've got all the sidewalks and under drains complete. On the west side, we will be moving over on the east side and doing a trench drain, pretty much from Kevin's Lot right there on the corner all the way. It's about 300 feet. We would project paving to be probably about the end of July. Ball goes well. We've got a couple of other things to prep. Of course, possibly the alley project. We can get that moving. Of course, we got LaGrange Acres paved. We did a couple of crossings, placed those. 723 Latimer, they had a real bad low spot. It'd been an issue for better part of 25 years. We got it draining. Hopefully, it's going to be a thing of the past. The speed humps I know have been a question. We will be doing those this month, the month of June, probably towards the end. On, of course, Hoffman Duncan, and then we still have two, two to put back on Third Avenue. We participated in the reverse auction with KLC as we usually do every year. And we paid this last winter $80.50 a ton. And our low bid was Morton Salt at $98. And then Compass Minerals at 98.99. I went ahead and awarded both participants with the bid, but you are not required to take on any salt. You don't have to purchase anything. I more or less did it as a backup because we've had issues several years where we're down to 50 tons and there's a snowstorm coming in. And I'm trying to argue with the vendor that I'm going to have a lot of mad people here in LaGrange if we run out of salt. And it's, we get a truck in, we use it up as fast as they're coming in, more or less as a backup. But we're, I've been in talks with J-Town Public Works as far as trying to latch on with them and possibly St. Matthews, try to get more bulk to get the price down some more, you know, try to save a few dollars if you can. But don't know if that's going to happen or not. We'll see. And then probably next month or so. Of course, if you haven't noticed, the train tower got hit. The, just this last week. I've got a contractor coming in to fix it. We had a little bit of trouble trying to find an eight by eight post to replace it. I didn't realize they were eight by eights. So we finally got one on order. They anticipate June 19th, they'll be into pretty much do all the repairs. So outside of that, if anybody has any questions, I'm all ears.
I'm just curious about the post at the corner at the four-way stop. I know that's not a city issue to fix, but what's going on with that? I think it's semi.
Telephone poles.
The telephone pole or the, I think a semi clipped it right, right at the corner there of the four-way stop.
Was there in a jiffy to fix their part, which is usually always, they're always very responsive. AT&amp;T, however, they're usually lacking behind quite a bit. So I put in a call to them Thursday last week. I haven't heard anything back yet. So I would assume they should be on it hopefully sometime this week. Issues like that, they're usually a little more responsive.
It's safe right now? You think it's safe? I had two questions too, just as follow-ups. Like the brush pickup, I know they're scheduled on Mondays, generally speaking. Does Memorial Day this week have an effect on Zone Two, which is normally scheduled for next week? Is it pushed back at all? Or is it just going to stay on the same calendar?
Calendar. We still went out last week just to get a, Area One is typically always the, the biggest area as far as rush, but we went back out again today.
And then you were talking about sidewalks. I, I wanted to ask between Stamper and Chestnut, is there, have there been any more discussions about doing something there for pedestrians? Because there's nothing.
About that, me and, me and Mayor have talked about it. I know, I believe the property owner that lives in the house right there, there's one, I believe this is access to his basement or crawl or his cellar, whatever it may be. He wasn't real agreeable how to get it through there because we, we have to remove his wall.
That person moved though? I thought there was, okay.
No, we've actually discovered a huge sinkhole just on the alley right there on, what street is that? Little dead end alley on parallel to Stamper. So it's actually on the state highway. We've talked to them. They came out and messed with it. We, we put 10 bags of bentonite in it, stopped it up for a little while and it bottomed out again. So I have no idea where it's going. There's, you can see utilities down in it, but.
Sidewalk at any point? Is there going to be a sidewalk at any point in that area?
Yes.
Know a time range?
We still have Area Four to finish up as far as our first round of repairs. And then we'll start doing connectivity after that. I'd say probably honestly, better part of next year, probably early spring.
Anyway, you could, Cory, I'd like to, you know, we've talked about, but those beautiful roads in LaGrange Acres, people are supposedly flying down those roads. And so the sooner you can get those speed humps back in there, the better off those kids and everybody down the park going to be. So I don't know when you've got, got that plan to do, but.
Be in, into this month, we'll get them in there.
In the month?
Yeah. If sooner, we can, we can slide it in.
Seventh. And this month's about three weeks away.
I know.
You know?
It'll be here before you know it, trust me.
Can the signs go back up again?
Which sign?
Speed signs right there, go, go back up again? I don't think they're up there, are they?
We have another speed limit sign, not speed limit, speed hump signs. We're going to actually put speed hump signs beside, beside every hump. We have complaints, people all the time. I can't see them. We can't see them. And they're striped according to MGDCD, but they are still hard to see.
Those yellow, those yellow, those yellow humps, sit down anymore? Just drive them into the pavement? No?
No.
Can't use them anymore? Okay.
In the alleys, but.
Okay. Anyway.
If sooner rather than later. Of course, weather's not so good this week.
Over there. What's over there?
Thank you, Cory. Unless someone, anyone else has a question for Cory? Thank you so much, sir. I know you're all busy and.
Get bored, you know where I'm at.
I hound him, I hound him all the time. I mean, leave him alone. So anyway, Chief, Chief Colette, why don't you come up and see if you can answer any questions or any concerns the council may have for your department? Questions or? Questions or everything?
Give my monthly activity report if that's okay. For the month of May, we had 524 dispatched activities and for the month of May, I'll give the activity report, which these are dispatch activities. I'm sure you've probably heard the description, but so everybody at home or watching knows that dispatch activities would be those runs that are dispatched by Alton County Dispatch for our officers to respond to or those incidents that our officers find and call out on. There was 524 activity pieces for May. The, I'll usually go through the top five or six, but the majority of those have been for citizens' requests for officers to call them by phone. Of course, under COVID, we had that a lot. People not wanting to have personal interaction. And quite a bit of time is devoted to those phone calls, um, as well as check situations and meet the persons in regard to either suspicious circumstances or dispute situations. And topping out the list is of course checking the welfare of individuals that haven't been heard from or seen and responding to a lot of those as well and suspicious vehicles. Top out the most and along with the traffic violation stops. It's a little bit up as you would expect as people are starting to move vaccinations and traffic activity and in-store activities have definitely picked up. So we're seeing an increase, slight increase in those as well. As far as projects, uh, we've been, uh, in contact with T-Mobile Cellular Service. They're offering a government program for first responder agencies. Just got word here in the last couple of days, we've been approved for an allotment of 16 service lines to, uh, provide us free cellular service for those numbers and for our mobile data hotspots, which enable our mobile data terminals to communicate with state databases and our, our drives. We're gonna get those at a much reduced price than what we've been paying under. So we should see some savings for our cellular expenditure. So once we get the equipment lined out, a timeline to get it, we should be in line. The county police have, have been on the system for a little while, have encountered no service issues, seems to, so, so it looks like be good for us and save a little money as well. As mentioned earlier, we are still operating with the, the two patrol officer vacancies. I hope to find some laterals, but competition is tight right now. All the agencies and those choosing not to pursue their career in law enforcement anymore. So, uh, every officer's trying. We've tried several different venues for advertising and, uh, it's just been slow. That's not good. When I mentioned those call-by phones, probably the vast majority of requests for call-by phones are, our agency and our officers are getting are internet-based crimes or financial-based crimes off credit. And it is very difficult for a local or police jurisdiction at local or state level to pursue those because most of the time there's international ties or they're violating federal crimes. We're not gonna be able to prosecute somebody's that is somewhere overseas in all reality. And, you know, the federal agencies can try to latch on to the big, usually we do lose service time because your creditors are gonna request some form of a police report. It's not gonna be real apart. And once we determine we can't chase anybody down, so to speak, but we, we get numerous calls for internet. We lose a lot of time to those, but, you know, basically the service that we can provide, we're gonna provide, but we're just validating that you've had a financial loss and your, your credit's been compromised. Yeah. And.
I said Bruce keeps putting these fish stories out there on Facebook. Are they real fish? Just messing with him.
I don't know, he, he spends a lot of time with the school kids. He, he coaches the, one of the school fishing teams, so.
I think all of you all are listening and that's very important. I love that.
We're trying and if anybody sees an issue, be sure to let me know. And, uh, and I know we touched on it earlier, but out of our cares allotted funds, just to give you an update, we were able to receive everybody that had an expired or near expiration bullet resistant vest. They have, and, uh, they mentioned earlier the new cruiser. Good thing we struck when we did because from what I understand, being told there's gonna be shortages of new police vehicles and chip problems and everything else. So that was great timing. That vehicle is now on, on the road in a full-time second shift capacity. So you'll see it out there. Questions or concerns?
I don't think so, Greg. I think, um, Debbie said and everyone says, um, unless they, unless they don't see enough of y'all in their neighborhoods, uh, then they evidently don't have any questions and sure your second shift and doing other things. So I think, I think the council is very satisfied with what's going on in our policing today. So thank you so much.
Always appreciate your support. Thank you all.
When they come.
Okay, uh, Tim Curtis. He's got about 20 more days left on his contract and he'll be done.
I, um, first of all, uh, apologize for subjecting all to my knobby knees tonight. I was, uh, over at, uh, at Eagle Creek. I was meeting with our golf instructor over there and I, I've worked in my shorts a lot. So sorry about that tonight. So, all right. Well, let's, I'll just buzz through a few things. Over the past month, we had a 5K run that y'all are probably aware that we had at, over at Edmondale Park and the, the mayor was there and we had 26 participants in the race. And I really appreciate all the help we got from Corey and from the chief on, on putting that race on. They, they're just great help to me. This past weekend, we had a fishing weekend going on also at, uh, Wilburn Park. We had 22 families come out for fishing, which is a pretty good little turnout for fishing. And, uh, we have an Eagle Scout just completed a project at Wilburn Park. He was putting up a hammock circle. Basically it's, there's one post in the middle and there's six posts around it. I, I found a good location for that. We got that in place. And, uh, so that was something that he got done for us there. Few other things we're working on, we're looking at playground upgrade possibly at Wilburn. There's a two bay swing set there and it's a little iffy. Looks like we could use a little better swing situation there. There, so I'll start pricing that and just sort of see what's out there for us. We've stepped up booking the, as John mentioned in the budget, that we might need an employee just to kind of help us to cover some of those to be there because there's a lot of calls coming in for stuff. And I'm, I'm getting quite a few calls on, on events at the community center. Fishing Wildlife's coming tomorrow, I'm meeting them, um, to look at the fins program at Wilburn Park and also at Eagle Creek. The fins program is fishing in neighborhoods. They will stock your, your lake free of charge, fishing wildlife will. So they're coming out to meet me tomorrow. They're gonna put a boat in at Wilburn to see if it's suitable for, for stocking them. We're gonna go over to Eagle Creek as well and take a look at the pond over there. Also, just, just a little FYI, I'm also serving on the committee for Trackside Tunes. I'm grateful to be, be doing that, so. But, uh, that program's coming together well, gonna start in July, I believe. July, end of July. Upcoming events, we did a trivia night this past month. It went very well, so I'm just gonna do another one of those in, uh, in, to bring some people down, maybe get some bounce houses and have some people come down. That would be on the Friday night, the 26th. We have art classes starting in the community center. Mike Prather's teaching those, starting on Tuesday, 7/6. The Golf Clinic, like I mentioned, I was meeting with her tonight, the golf instructor at Eagle Creek and she is starting on Monday, 7/12. We have a co-ed volleyball league, already has 12 teams in the league, so that, that leaves ready to roll. And that'll be starting on Sunday night, 7/11. And just an FYI, we started our Facebook page, uh, a couple of weeks after I started, March 1st, so it's probably about March 15th. We have 638 followers now on our Facebook page, so that's going quite well. We're getting quite a bit, quite a bit of attention there. And we've got another Eagle Scout who contacted me just today, looking at a project for constructing some benches in the parks and I'll see what, what his plan looks like and, and what we've got in mind with that. So that's sort of what I've got at this.
Went to the fishing this past weekend and they loved it.
Right. All right, very good. Any questions or comments?
I ran into 5K racing, Tim, man, I about died.
Did you have to take a concrete block?
Made it in 41 minutes and the winner made it in 21 minutes, but.
And it's all that counts.
Those geese hadn't got after me as I ran through Wilburn Park, I'd done better, but I had to fight geese off.
Those geese actually helped you go faster, John, when they're chasing after you.
Yes, but anyway, thank you, Tim. Great, 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 uh, report. Lot of activity, sounds like to myself. And he's talking about family night. I was talking to Becca and Stephanie and Tim about, once the kids are out of school, I was wondering if we could do a children's family night at the community center and advertise it where kids of the community can come in and maybe have popcorn, um, just bouncy houses and stuff like that, just utilize the facility and be a fun night for them. And hopefully, Tim, can get, you said it's on the 26th?
The 26th. So we need to get, we're gonna do it, we gotta start pushing it. This, June.
July?
Be the 20th, it should be a Saturday, shouldn't it?
Then it must be the 25th then. Must be the 25th then, we're looking at. It was a Friday night, June. Yep, maybe the 25th then, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, anyone have any question for Tim? At this time, if not, uh, thank you, thank you, Tim, for your report and we'll be seeing you around. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you a lot. Okay, let's go to standing committee reports. First one is Parks Committee, Mr. Joe Davenport.
Parks Committee met May the 12th at, um, Mundo Park. We had, uh, committee, the mayor, Tim Curtis, Corey Rustic. We had a citizen that hung with us, I think from Parrot Arch. We, uh, the main topic we did there was the skate park equipment. Uh, Trey took notes, I'll, I'll turn it over to him in just a second. We, we did adjourn from there as the mayor said and we, we pretty much scratched Mondo as, as any possibility of putting the skate park equipment there. There wasn't any, we really didn't contact the neighbors, but we just decided to probably be in their back door. So we, we adjourned and went to the Springs Park. We looked at two sites there, the one down on, uh, the curve at, uh, and we decided that might be a little secluded and we moved on up to the Walters property. And that's basically decided where we would like to try to, to get the skate park in there in, uh, Phase Two of the Springs Park. So that's basically what the committee decided on. So, uh, Trey was, took notes for us. So Trey, if you don't mind, if you want to go on over everything and we did discuss. I appreciate it.
I'll do the best I can. You covered, uh, item number one that we spent the most time on, uh, greatly. So, uh, I echo exactly what you said as far as the minutes go, um, with the recommendation to, um, locate the skate park by the Francis Walters, uh, our former Francis Walters property, uh, in the general vicinity. And then, uh, just looking at a lot of the stuff that Tim covered, uh, great job of, uh, covering the activity that was, uh, last week. And, um, we discussed, um, some basketball goals, um, either maybe Wilburn or in the Springs Park. That we didn't really settle on anything in particular there, but, uh, just discussion. The scout project that Tim has already talked about, um, sounds like that was completed. So he's making a lot of good things happen, uh, that come out of committee. We did talk, uh, again about the swing set, uh, expanding that foot. So there's a, uh, swing set now at, at Wilburn, but, um, you know, adding to that. We talked about adding, discussing that in, in more depth, uh, this month. Community Center, you already hit on as well, pickleball, walking, uh, the cameras, stuff like that, uh, being implemented. So that all sounded great. We did talk about some needs at John Walsh, uh, Park with the pavilion and the gazebo. There's, uh, um, a couple of smaller gazebos around that are in need of some, some repair, which, uh, Corey spoke to that too. So that's, you know, on the books to, to get addressed. We did talk about, uh, tailgating is okay in the parks. Just some fun discussion around that. Maybe some possible camping at, uh, a determined time and place. There are some, some places that might be suitable for that. And then, uh, our last item was, um, still discussion on, uh, on skating in the community center, um, which that's a mayor's favorite there. But, uh, you guys covered just about everything that, uh, we discussed, uh, in our, about an hour, hour and a half meeting, so.
About skating, you mean roller skating?
Roller skating, yes, yes. That's, that's been a fan favorite of, of discussion many times, so.
Okay.
Trey, I appreciate you taking those notes for us. So.
Good question. Okay, my question is, we, we're not gonna do it at Mondo. How do, how do they feel about it with the Springs? Has anybody talked to them? Like, hands them, rooming to them?
Is it the skate park?
Skate park.
So unfortunate, I guess I didn't really read that into the record, but unfortunately our, uh, committee meeting was before the, uh, Springs Park Committee. So we haven't heard a follow-up from what was, I guess, discussed from, in that.
Yeah.
Committee or space.
Okay. Thank you.
The, uh, the Board of Directors bill, um. Uh, Blake put them there. Yeah. The board, the board itself, which Joe and I attend every, every meeting of the board, Mayor, we're very much aware of what's going on there. And, uh, they have a great five-member Board of Directors, I will have to admit. I think Joe would agree with me on that. You want five, five more than five conscientious people. They have a management contracts with Guy and Melissa Breeds LLC. They, they operate that golf course since 2005 and ran it for the Board of Directors Bill. They've had a great COVID year based primarily on COVID because people flocked to the golf courses because they couldn't do anything else. So they've had their best year ever. And I've been there, I'm there every meeting. I'm in Dale Berry, who's the president and owner of Weir Construction, is the chairman of the board. You won't find a better man. Lives in Glen Eagles and he, he is the executive director or their president or the chairman of the board. Joe, I, I know would agree with me because Joe's right there listening and we have good discussion and, and they, uh, I asked him last meeting for $25,000 other proceeds since they had a good operating year and we've received that check at City Hall, they gave it to us. And, um, I don't know if Joe needs anything, but that's, does that answer your question or not? Yes. Yes, we got, we've got a, we've got a budget. We got a good budget. Okay, well, we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying Beach, myself, I don't believe it, Beach and myself met with Dale Berry and Brett McKinney, what, two or three days ago over this exact thing to try, since we don't have a Parks Board anymore, Bill, it's coming to the Parks Committee and to the City Council. No, I agree, but, but what I said, what I said to Dale Berry, I said, since we don't have Parks Board and don't have Dr. Hayes out there, we've gotta get a memorandum of understanding of how this Parks Board, this Board is to function and the City Council needs to be aware of this because that's a big operation out there.
Okay, let, can I explain one thing? What was, since the, the repealing of the Parks, uh, Board, which was a formerly an or, an ordinance-created, state-created structure, we eliminated that, but the, the previous arrangement with the Board of Directors of the golf course was actually an advisory board, which the purpose of an advisory board is to consult and advise to the Parks Department, which we no longer have. So we're in the process of creating, I guess what you would call a special purpose government entity, okay, which is a term of art used in a. entity, which is a term of art used in the KRS, SPGE, you've probably heard that term, which is what the advisory board or the Board of Directors is. So the the bylaws that they're acting under are being revisited and restructured to report directly to the city.
And, and I made direct emphasis two days ago, when we met with Chairman Berry and Brett McKinney, who's a CPA himself, that very much on topic, but I said that what I'd like to see us do, because Dale Berry been on the board for 21 years and said, John, I want to play more golf, I'm tired of getting up at 7:00, 7:30 meeting, come to meeting in Eagle Creek, so he's, he's resigned at the end of this year. And that brought me to to the point of submission of new, new appointees to the board, and I wanted that, appointees provided to myself, and then I'll make a recommendation for new appointees approved by the City Council. Okay? So we're working, we're working towards a understanding of how it's to function since that Park Score no longer is out there. Okay. Okay, let's see here, folks, where, where are we?
We're, we're having some great discussions out there, Mayor Lime Lime, we, I mean, it's since, since we got rid of, since the Park Board's not around and and then the mayor's been attending each one of the meetings every month, so it's been, you know, it's been some good conversations and I feel like there's been a lot accomplished, and the board is fantastic.
I was worried about oversight.
Yeah, 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 fine, appreciate.
Okay, see, that was. Jason Taylor, you need to report. Trey, Trey Cameron needs to report, I'm sorry, Trey.
We, so we did not have a budget committee meeting this past month due to no agenda items. Sounds like we will have one, at least one, I guess, for this month, so next meeting is June 23rd at 6 o'clock. I guess we'll do in person again, or start to do in person again at City Hall. We, I think we have been meeting at 6 o'clock, if I remember correctly.
Okay, anything else, Trey?
Thank you.
Jason, would you like to give your report, sir?
Sure, thanks, mayor. I'll try to expedite it. We covered a lot of things at the committee meeting, ordinance committee, on Tuesday, May 25th. I was present Andrea, I was present Leslie as well, Stephanie Winter, Beach was there, Chief Colette, and then we had one guest, David Bazanas. Items we discussed were the pedler's license, and David really wanted to talk with us a little bit about what we had in mind for some of the pop-up shops and things like that, and we've considered amending the pedler's license, possibly calling it a vendor license and and changing the the fees potentially. And Beach is working with me to get a draft of an ordinance to take a look at at the next meeting. We talked about moving the ordinance committee meeting dates, but we decided to leave them on the fourth Tuesday of the month. We did have that discussion, though, and there were some other conflicts. There was a discussion of a possible legal review of our ordinances from AM Legal, and I won't get into all the details, because I emailed everybody about that, along with a proposed contract, and just take a look at that and welcome your feedback next month. We'll have Rich Frohmeier from AM Legal here to answer any questions. In the meantime, we're also trying to determine kind of what the current process is of getting the ordinances uploaded, the current costs involved, and just so we can compare everything and make an informed decision after the council has a chance to take a look at that. Another thing we talked about was possibility of amending ordinance 52.55 and 52.73, as requested by Scott Trees, essentially eliminating some of the tables in that ordinance, those ordinances, and allowing these, essentially to be on the LUC website and delete the tables in the current ordinances. So we're working, working on that. And there was also another issue that came up, because it seems like there, I think it's currently 5% of what the LUC is allowed to ask for without approval by the City Council, as I talked with Scott earlier, but for some reason, it still seems to be 7% listed. So we need to get that fixed. There was brief discussion of actually changing that again at some point, but we didn't get in any discussion further than that, but we do need to get it back to what it's supposed to be, at least currently, 5%, because it still says 7%. And then we had a brief discussion of assigned ordinances, historic district guidelines, specifically relating to murals, and some definitions of murals, and, you know, any potential revisions and modifications to any current language. No action was taken by the committee. We're still kind of looking at that and trying to come up with some ideas that might work for a lot of entities involved, but that discussion will continue in probably into the next meeting as well. That next meeting will be June 22nd on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Welcome, any questions, and I might refer you to Beach on some of them, depending on what the questions are.
This Wednesday, we'll meet at Wilburn Park. Ah, yes.
Jason, thank you, sir, for that detailed report. You sent out a nice follow-up minutes of those meetings, and it's very well-written, and gave everybody to understand what you all talked about. Okay, item 21, we have a second public comment. Anyone here that's late in the game for a public comment? Okay, 22, new business. Anybody have any new business they'd like to mention?
Eric, if I could just briefly, I know there was a letter regarding, from Kevin Woosley that you had forwarded on, I didn't know if you planned to talk about that tonight, and, you know, with regard to street namings of of him and or any other individuals, I didn't know if those issues were going to be brought up and discussed.
I'd like for us to discuss Kevin Woosley right now.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up, but I support that, but, yeah.
I'm an open-door type of person, so y'all, I know he's received a letter from me or an email a week or so ago, based on idea of renaming a street in front of Grange Elementary School for Kevin, Kevin R. Woosley, and it's open for discussion. You read the the letter? And if if perhaps you think it's a possibility and a thing that the council wishes to do, I've asked Mr. Craig Mile to, well, actually have a couple resolutions that whether Mr. Craig Mile wants to enter resolution into the record, if in fact we choose to do something of this nature, and it'd be up to Chairman, Mr. Craig Mile, but anyone have any discussion on that, that that particular item at this time?
Mr. Woosley has done a lot for the city of LaGrange and everywhere, I mean, he's been the school board and everything. I would be very much in favor of giving him the recognition I think he so rightly deserves in terms of.
Make a motion to that.
He very much deserves it.
I think, I think, I think in this particular situation, based on the actual piece of street that he's talking about, it's not a street where any, any addresses would need to be changed or altered or corrected or deal with them, deal with the.
If they're going, they should be going by them.
And it's just be the street directly in front of LaGrange Elementary, that's what we're talking about, so I think it would be a fairly easy, easy thing to do if the council wishes to do.
I would like to make a motion that go ahead and change the street.
I get that. Looked over, I did it first.
A motion and a second.
I did it first.
We don't have it. Got a motion, a second. Got the motion, a second. Nope, any further discussion on that? Not, excuse me?
Maybe there's a resolution that we need to read, or?
Resolution, or is a motion to do it?
Well, you can make the motion, but part of the motion would be to pass a, to make a resolution to make it sort of look fancy, and and so I can draft up a resolution, get it out to you.
I thought you had it.
Well, I've got, I don't have it with me right.
You have two resolutions.
Got it online here. Do you have one?
Yeah, here we go.
There you go.
That's suffice.
Yeah.
Resolution.
All right, here's a resolution renaming Old Jefferson Street to honor Kevin Woosley. Be called Kevin R. Woosley Drive. Whereas Kevin Woosley having dedicated 25 years of his life to LaGrange in Oldham County, with many accomplishments under his belt, bettering the community for our citizens and youth, having been among the highest accomplishments, whereas the serving the community has been a driving force behind many hats that have been worn by Kevin, serving on the Oldham County Board of Education for 13 years, as well as the City Council for 10 years. He has been the voice of many people in different situations, therefore being resolved by the City Council of the city of LaGrange, that the mayor does hereby proclaim and the city does hereby approve the renaming of Old Jefferson Street to Kevin R. Woosley Drive. And so adopted by the city. So if that's acceptable, then what the, whether the, what the council does is, you all take a voice vote, or it's not, actually, there's, the, you know, resolutions have no binding effect, okay, so it's just kind of an honorific thing, but it's, it's important to honor. So this would just be a resolution that would indicate the approval.
I think Leslie made the motion initially, didn't you, to do that? Or who made that motion to, who made the motion to Debbie?
First.
Second it, and Bill thirded it.
Thirded it.
Okay, got a motion, a second, and backed up with a third, but always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Is it going to be Woosley Drive or Woosley Way?
Well.
I like Woosley.
I put Kevin R. Woosley, but it might be Woosley, Woosley Drive. You know, we got one more, we got one more matter here tonight, and.
You're done.
The cameras are rolling, but, you know, I don't know how else to say it, and Mr. Henderson's here tonight, Matthew at the Oldham area. We, we have been asked, this City Council, and I'm trying to keep this tone down, but we've been asked by the Oldham Development Board to rename LaGrange Parkway in honor of a person whom has delivered many, many millions of dollars of worth to not only our county, but also specifically Oldham Reserve and road infrastructure, and it continues to happen. Bill makes the motion, does anyone second that? Debbie Pollard? So we have that motion, a second, does anyone have any discussion on that at all?
I did, it's on, I'd say.
Terrace Highway.
Well, there, there, okay, go ahead, Beach, go ahead, and, you know, that's the best I can do with it.
Be another resolution of the City Council directing the mayor to take some administrative action, approval of a resolution renaming LaGrange Parkway in honor of former Kentucky State Senator Ernie Harris, to be known as the Ernie Harris Parkway. Whereas Ernie Harris Jr., as chairman of the Kentucky State Transportation, as well as holding the seat of Senate State Senator, for his contributed greatly to making this critical piece of infrastructure, infrastructure a reality, referring to the Oldham Reserve. Whereas Senator Harris has provided assistance and unwavering support in the aid of millions of dollars to Oldham Reserve Business Park. Senator Harris has fought for the Louisville Dampier Bridge, LaGrange Parkway, and future ramps to join the the Dampier Bridge to the Parkway. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council, that the mayor does hereby, that the mayor shall hereby proclaim and the City Council does hereby approve the renaming of LaGrange Parkway in honor of former Kentucky State Senator Ernie Harris, to be known as the Ernie Harris Parkway.
Okay, motion by Bill, second by Debbie, this resolution, any further discussion on that? If not, always in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You think you can help us out on that?
Andrew?
Huh?
Phil was surprised.
Okay, buddy. Thank you, thank you, Andrew.
I haven't done it before yet.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Okay, scooped by the Courier-Journal.
Yeah, right. Okay, well, thank, thank certainly Andrew and anyone else in the audience and whatever, but we'll see how it works. Unfinished business. Anybody have anything they want to bring for the council this time? That you'd like to bring up? Okay? Any announcements you want to make before we go into executive session for just a small bit of time? Any, next meeting date's July the 6th. I will say, in your pockets, did you all see all the different thank yous that were sent to us on behalf of the many recipients of the CARESAC funding? We made sure that we got, tried to get everyone's card or letter into those, into the packet. There's a big flea market, Flea on 53, on the 25th and 26th this month, Kentucky Flea Market's coming to City Place and the surrounding block. They're going to try to put 150 to 175 booths within City Place and on those surrounding areas down there, so that's coming from the Kentucky Flea Market that typically has their flea market at Louisville. They're going to go out into some neighboring communities and try to do it and bring people into these other communities. Okay? I do have item 25, executive session to, for 61.810B deliberations on future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency. Anyone willing to make that motion to move into executive session for just hopefully a short time?
Motion, go ahead. I'll make the motion.
Made by Trey Cameron, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on their motion? We're going in and under this statute. Always in favor, let me know, I'm saying aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, we're going to go next door to this room over here, everyone, and we should be back early, pretty soon.